On the agenda. My microphone. Welcome. Today is Tuesday, March 8th. It is about four, it is approximately 4:30 PM. My name is Ari Parker. I am the mayor of Watsonville and I'd like to welcome you to our city council meeting this evening. We will begin with roll call.
Dutra?
Yes.
Garcia?
Here.
Hurst?
Here.
Montesino? Kiroz Carter?
Parker?
Here. Okay, and from that point, we're going to do a motion to excuse the absent council members, if any. I think council, Mayor Protem Montesino needs to be excused until closed session. So if anybody wants to make the motion.
Also moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Strada?
Aye.
Garcia? Hurst?
Aye.
Kiroz Carter?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to a report of disbursements. I hope everybody's had an opportunity to take a look. 3B, written reports by council members regarding actions taken on their regional commissions or boards that may affect the city of Watsonville, if any. Now, we're going to move to the consent agenda. All items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions, which are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one consensus motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the consensus motion. The mayor, me, will allow public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. And so we will open this up now for a public input on the consent agenda. Seeing no public member wishing to comment, I'll move to taking, well, do we have any other clarifying questions by council before we take a motion? Okay, and we have a second. Councilman Hurst. All right, and as we move through.
But I would have a comment or two if you would entertain me.
Okay, if you would.
Well, you can see that on our consent agenda, the water treatment plant is being upgraded and we're very grateful for those opportunities because nothing in this city is going to work effectively if we don't have a good wastewater management system and make sure that it avoids failure and protecting it from flooding is going to be pretty important as well. So I'm glad to see that we're making progress with that and all the other amendments or the additions that are going into that. It's great that we're moving forward on the rail trail as well. That's item 4F and completing that project before the funding disappears for it. And so I'm glad to know that we've got the funding and that we can put that in place. And regarding item 4G, that's our new agreement with Caltrans regarding electrical facilities. Caltrans has a whole new operating plan for Main Street and beautification and trash pickup. And so we're really interested in being good partners with Caltrans. And lastly, I hope, is item 6A. This is the limited tax refunding bonds to refinance the city's retirement obligations. This is a big deal. And I want to thank Mayor Parker for making sure that we get this addressed. We've talked about it quite a bit in the past, and this is a great opportunity with the rates being what they are now. We could have saved some money last year too, probably, but it is what it is. And I'm glad that Mayor Parker and staff have moved this forward. And so this is good news for the city. And last, the housing element, we'll, everybody can read that report and see what we really need to do. Thanks for entertaining my comments.
Sure. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, if you will see that in 4B, the conference seminar summary, it is blank. And I know Councilwoman Vanessa has been working to get that filled, and I just want to turn it over to her.
You're talking about 4B, a motion accepting written report from a member, Kiroz Carter, regarding a conference attendance.
Right, and it's blank, if you see.
Oh, it's blank in our notes.
Yeah, it's blank in our notes, but.
Yeah. Do you have, do you have that with you?
Yes, I do. So there was an issue with the fillable PDF, so I apologize for that, but I can go ahead and read it. I have it pulled up here, mayor, with your permission.
Sure.
Okay. So I attended the League of California Cities Training for New Mayors and Council Members on January 20th to 21st and 27th through 28th, although there were several trainings per day. In this report, I will only be discussing one training session per day. I will begin with the training session on January 20th titled "An Irregular Meeting of the City Council of Dysfunction Junction: The Do's and Don'ts of Conducting a Public Meeting." Next, I will discuss this session on January 21st titled "Financial Responsibilities: City Revenue's Workshop." And then I will discuss the session on Thursday, January 27th, titled "Your Legal Powers and Obligations: Open Government and Conflicts of Interest." And finally, I will discuss the last session I attended on Friday, January 28th, titled "From Dangerous Discourse to Extraordinary Engagement: Changing the Conversation on Inclusion." To begin, the do's and don'ts of conducting a public meeting, discuss best practices when conducting an online meeting. This session also discussed AB 361, which amended the Brown Act rules on teleconferencing due to COVID-19. Secondly, financial responsibilities, discussed how cities collect revenue, types of taxes, what a city budget is for, the period of a fiscal year, and how to diagnose the fiscal health of a city. Thirdly, your legal powers and obligations, discussed the legal rights and limitations of a city, legalities of raising money in terms of taxes, the legalities of adhering to the Brown Act, adhering to AB 992, which states that council members cannot talk to each other on social media regarding official business as this violates the Brown Act. Finally, "From Dangerous Discourse" was the last session I attended. This session discussed the difference between diversity and inclusion in that diversity is differences and inclusion is a conscious effort to include an array of different voices and people. This session also discussed bias and how to identify and overcome unconscious bias. This session asked the question, who is not at the table but should be? These sessions are only four of the many I attended at this training. I will be attending two more trainings, one on ethics and one on sexual harassment later in the month of February. One of those has been pushed back to this month, the end of this month. And I will report back to the council and the public on those trainings after I have attended them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kiroz Carter. Okay, without any other comments from the council, can we take a roll call?
Estrada?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hurst?
Aye.
Kiroz Carter?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes. So we have now moved to the part of our agenda where we're looking to move into closed session. No. No. I'm just jumping the gun tonight. I love it. Okay, we have new business. Under new business, wow, I skipped two whole items. We have a limited tax refunding bonds to refinance the city's retirement obligations. And this will be presented to us with information from our administrative services director, Irwin. Is that correct? Thank you.
Good evening, council members. So yes, I am here to present to you some plans and some ideas to help deal with the city's pension liabilities. And I want to also echo what Councilmember Hurst mentioned, in that we want to also thank Mayor Parker for really pushing us and encouraging us to work on this issue, which has been a very difficult and sort of a big mountain that we've been climbing as a city for quite a while now. So just a kind of a refresher, right? So we pay into the Calpers retirement system for all of our employees, and we pay two portions, two different things, two different parts of pension costs each year. We pay our normal costs, which is a percentage of payroll. It's a percent of an employee's salary, and it's the assumed amount that we have to put in that year to be invested, to be able to fund their retirement benefits when they retire. We also pay what is called the UAL, the unfunded accrued liability. And so this is essentially benefits previously earned by either current employees or retirees. And it's when those normal costs are invested and they don't necessarily earn the amount or they lose value or there's been a change in actuarial assumptions or for whatever reason, what has previously been invested is now not assumed to be able to fund that full retirement liability when it's needed. So right now, the current payment that we're projecting to have to make for just the UAL portion of our retirement costs next year is $8.1 million. And I want to show this little slide, which is very interesting. And it shows kind of how we got to this place where we're paying so much into the UAL every year. And it's the result of sort of mixed returns on the part of Calpers investments over time. And then it's also policy decisions that they have made basically over the last 10 years to sort of course correct themselves. But those corrections have really increased both UAL and normal costs for cities. And so like I said, for the last 10 years or so, we have been sort of climbing this mountain as these policy changes that Calpers has decided upon have impacted us and basically every city and municipality in California that participates in the Calpers system. So I, we have engaged with Urban Futures, a municipal advisory firm, who has been working with us for several months now to develop strategies around that UAL. And I'm actually going to turn it over right now to Wincksey for the remainder of the presentation.
Thank you, Cindy. Good afternoon, mayor, members of the city council.
Good afternoon. One second. Did you say you were going to show a slide or something? Because we're, I'm not seeing anything. I don't have anything here. There, there it is. Okay, cool.
Yeah. So as Cindy was saying, there's a lot of changes that happen from year to year that influence agencies, UAL. And the city of Watsonville is not alone in this challenge. Pension costs and rising pension costs is one of the largest cost drivers that many public agencies are facing today. And so when looking at strategies on how to address pension liabilities, there is no one single strategy that's a one and done. This is an ongoing management issue. And I also echo Cindy in applauding council and taking a look at the opportunities that are out there. So just to demonstrate an impact on the UAL, the fiscal year '21 was a really good return year for Calpers, 21.3%, which well exceeds their target of 7%. So we do expect that as of June 30th, 2021, there will be a significant net credit to the city's UAL. It is somewhat offset from, by the Calpers lowering their discount rate from 7% to 6.8%. But again, we do expect a nice net credit as of June 30th, 2021, that would increase the funding level from 71% to 79%. However, year-to-date fiscal year '22 returns right now are at about 1.3%. So the city does allocate its pension costs across its general fund and its enterprise funds. And this is an approximation after the fiscal year '21 credit of the enterprise funds, outstanding UAL, as well as the general fund. So the general fund carries about 73% and the enterprise carry the rest between water, wastewater, solid waste, and the airport. And this shows the impact to the actual annual UAL payments after the fiscal year '21 credit. The dotted line is fiscal year 2020 UAL, and then what happens after, we expect the fiscal year '21 net credit to set in. So there is a significant impact. But again, fiscal year '22 to date is looking quite different, and the city should expect an additional base after that. City does have a pension tax, a voter-approved pension tax override that can solely be used to pay the city's pension costs, both normal and UAL payments. It is capped in an amount and estimating fiscal year '21 assessed value of $4.8 billion. That's about a $3.7 million annual revenue to the city. And so if you break down the normal costs between the general fund and the enterprise funds, it's about $3.2 million to the general fund, $800,000 to the enterprise funds. And on the UAL side, the PTO-eligible UAL is about $6.6 million of the $8.1 million that Cindy mentioned earlier. So another way to look at it is assuming a 2.75% growth rate in normal costs, the PTO is estimated to generate just enough to cover the city's normal costs. And so it doesn't really cover the general fund UAL payments. So looking at various strategies to manage this ongoing pension liability, and we have reviewed with staff several strategies that we will bring back in a plan or policy for council to consider and adopting, again, to manage this ongoing pension liability. Some of the strategies involve how to use one-time monies or reserves or reserves in enterprise funds. And then when looking at CIP planning or refunding opportunities, what to do with savings achieved through those strategies. The remainder of the presentation involves number six, which is issuing taxable bonds to prepay a portion of the outstanding UAL. And is again, just one of the strategies that we are looking at. So the economics behind issuing taxable bonds to prepay a portion of the UAL is somewhat like prepaying or refinancing your mortgage from a higher interest rate to a lower interest rate. So you do have, you generate interest savings. Right now, as I mentioned earlier, the UAL discount rate or target investment rate is going down from 7% to 6.8%. So essentially, any part of the UAL, which is the unpaid amount, is being charged to the city at a 6.8% interest rate. So being able to borrow in the market, the municipal bond market, say at 4%, about 4%, you generate an interest rate differential between the 4% and the 6.8%. So with this strategy of issuing taxable bonds that would be backed by the pension tax override that I mentioned earlier, we target a 1.25x coverage because we don't want to use all of that revenue to pay debt service. Right now, we estimate being able to generate about $39 million to prepay a portion of that $70 million after the fiscal year '21 UAL that the city has, or as of June 30th, 2020, it was $98 million. So you prepay $39 million, and that would generate savings, as I mentioned, at a lower interest rate. And then the remaining UAL, some of it is allocated to the enterprise fund, about $18.8 million, as I mentioned earlier. And then there's about $12 million remaining, again, just estimation, after the impact of the fiscal year '21 net credit. And then because we're generating coverage with this structure, any remaining amounts from those PTO revenues can be used to pay normal costs or to pay additional payments on the UAL. And this graph shows savings with this strategy. The dotted line is the UAL, current UAL payments. And then the gray bars is the remaining UAL payments from the amount that's not being prepaid. The blue bar is the debt service that replaces the UAL. And the yellow bars, you can see, are the cash flow savings that get generated with issuance of the bonds at a lower interest rate than the discount rate. This is the same information, but in numbers form, for those of you who like numbers. As you can see in the yellow bar where we were talking about the cash flow savings, right now, we estimate about $1.5 million to about $1.76 million of cash flow savings in the first two years. This lays out a schedule for this financing. As you can see, in March, we're here at the council meeting to authorize the resolution and the indenture before you this afternoon. And if council approves this item, this does put this tool in the toolbox. As everyone knows, the markets are pretty volatile right now, but we'll continue to monitor and come back to council sometime in April, the first or second meeting in April, to get a final green light to move forward and to approve an offering document in order to be able to sell the bonds. We then anticipate being able to sell the bonds and close the bonds in May. So we just discussed the savings that can be achieved with the strategy, which is on the left-hand side. Again, refinancing 6.8% loan at a lower interest rate, much like refinancing a mortgage. But with this strategy, there is some market timing risk involved because you're issuing bonds and then handing that money over to Calpers to include in their portfolio. So you are better funding your UAL plan, but Calpers invest in a mix of stock and bonds. So there is some market timing risk. And it matters what happens in the first few years in the market. That impacts the ultimate outcome of this strategy. But the more cushion you have between the discount rate and the borrowing rate, the better off you are. We did want to point out that there is some market timing risk. So you don't know the true final outcome until the very end of when the bonds mature. Just a quick case study to illustrate what I just mentioned. In this case, the city of Pittsburgh, back in 2006, what we call POBs 1.0, and right now, POBs 2.0, there's a lot of lessons learned from those prior generation pension obligation bonds that make them much less risky. So instead of issuing escalating debt service, you issue level debt service. We're also at a market environment at a much lower interest rate than when Pittsburgh issued their bonds. So instead of issuing at 5.87%, right now, we're seeing below 4%, conservatively, somewhere around 4%. But this just illustrates what happens and the impact in terms of the earnings on those proceeds that are turned over to Calpers. In this case, the portfolio for Pittsburgh is estimated to be better off, a little over half a million, having issued the pension obligation bonds than having not, even having experienced a couple of years of negative returns. And if the bonds had been issued at a lower interest rate, more like in the current market, then Pittsburgh would be in even better position. But again, just wanted to emphasize here that it does matter what happens in the first few years in terms of the market return and also the cushion between where you're borrowing and Calpers discount rate.
So as Wincksey mentioned, this is just one tool in the toolbox that we're wanting to sort of start the clock on getting all of the, basically all the steps in place to allow us to issue these PTO-backed bonds. In the meantime, we're going to continue to work with Wincksey and the rest of her team to develop other strategies to deal with that enterprise portion that's remaining and the remaining general fund portion. And that is likely to take the form of, you know, some combination of other tools that are available, including, you know, 115 trusts, reserve policies, pension policies that talk about how and when we make deposits into reserves, pull from reserves, what our funding target should be, again, possibly leveraging what would have been maybe cash funding for capital, finding financing options to then be able to use that cash to pay off the remaining, you know, remaining UAL. So we'll be working with her and her team to continue to develop those strategies and policies and come back to you with, again, more tools to put in our toolbox as we continue to manage this debt going forward. I kind of just said all that. Okay. So with that, I am happy to take questions. Wincksey is here, and then I'm also here with Marissa Duran from my office and Juan Galván, who is going to be our bond counsel on this issuance. So if you have any questions for any of us who are here.
All right, city council, do you have, okay. Were you raising your hand, Councilman Hurst?
Yes, but I believe.
Okay, Councilwoman Garcia, go ahead.
First.
Thank you. I have three questions. The first one is, in trying to understand the UAL, what is past service credit?
So the normal cost portion is what's being earned by current employees in this current year. The UAL is essentially a past due payment. So whether it's current employees or past employees, it's what's already been earned and promised in terms of benefits.
So in terms of the past service credit, it includes in those that have already retired?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, what allowed us to charge 27% of the pension obligation to the enterprise funds?
So we calculate that based on share of current and past employees, right? So every employee for the city of Watsonville is guaranteed a Calpers pension plan. And those employees who are funded by those enterprise funds are, you know, their share of that retirement promise is paid out of those funds as well. And so we run a calculation based on current and past employees of those funds and then use that percentage to decide how much of the UAL belongs to the enterprises versus the.
Okay, so then those employees were funded by the enterprise funds and not by general fund?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And my last question is, when people hear about taxable bonds, they automatically think that they will have to vote to tax themselves. Please explain what that, why that is not the case with this proposal.
You for the question. So these bonds would be repaid through an already voter-approved pension tax override that I mentioned that has a cap. The term taxable is really about what the use of proceeds are. So public agencies can issue tax-exempt debt for tax-exempt purposes, like building a public purpose facility. But in this case, because the proceeds are being used to give to Calpers to fund the retirement funds, it has to be issued on a taxable basis. So it's the investors that don't get the tax exemption when they're purchasing the bonds that make it taxable.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
No new tax will be levied for, to repayment of these bonds.
And Councilman Hurst? And Councilwoman Hearst?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I got a little ahead of myself when I was talking about the consent agenda because, you know, even I get confused once in a while. The, you know, this is really important, and I hope all the taxpayers are paying attention on this, and particularly the retirees in our community, because as everybody kind of finds out eventually, that debt can be a life preserver, but also can be a killer and an anchor that takes you to the bottom. And so, you know, for us to move forward in saving the taxpayers' money, and that's what this really does, it saves the taxpayers' money, and whatever we can afford to prepay, you know, that's going to be additional savings all the way around. And so I'm really excited that this has finally been brought to our agenda. And I know Mayor Parker worked hard to bring this to fruition, and I think there were some other financial advisers previously to Ms. Wing that helped us out as well. And I want to thank her for her presentation today and simplifying this so that folks can look at this in the past and say, yes, the city did the right thing here, and whether they say thank you or not is up to them. But let me say thank you, and that every percent certainly counts, especially when we have to pay it. Thank you.
Any other comments or clarifying questions from council? Okay. I have a couple, just a quick comment. So, and I saw it in this report. I think we talked about the future, because I know I've had many conversations with Director Serrano about we need to have a strategy that stays continuously in motion and moves us forward with this, because there are cities all over the state who are worrying about bankruptcy and how they're going to deal with these pension obligations. And so we have our own, what is it, PTO, right? And that's great, but it also, that's just for a certain portion of it. And then we have everybody else, right? And so we still have those pension obligations. And I want to thank you for being open-minded about moving forward with it. I know that's been something that you've been thinking about generally, about worrying about making sure that our pension obligations are paid. And not only paid, but how can we best pay them so that if we have money, we can leverage that to use in other spaces? So it's much appreciated. I don't have any real questions, clarifying questions at this time for this particular thing. I know this is the start of a time, a period. And then at that end of that period, we are able to issue a certain amount. We haven't decided upon that yet. It could be more or less, is that correct? But it has to stay within the parameters of our pension obligation fund that we are talking about, not the whole city. Is that correct?
Right. For this issuance that you are starting the process on today, right, it would have to be, so there's an upper limit, and that upper limit would be how much can be funded out of the pension tax override that we have. And then again, there is no lower limit. It will be based on market. And again, if the market does something crazy between now and May, then we'll also wait till the timing is right. But by starting the process now, we'll be able to wait for that right moment, right? We couldn't issue today if we wanted to because we don't have sort of the validation and the documents and the ratings and all of that kind of stuff in our back pocket. So between now and May, we'll be getting all of those things lined up. And then if May doesn't turn out to be the right moment, for whatever reason, we can hold that and wait for the right moment to then issue. And again, the upper limit on this tool is the amount of the pension tax override. But again, we'll be exploring other options in the meantime, and we could always come back with other financing options for the remainder if that's what, as we evaluate all the other options, if that turns out to be something we think needs to be an option, we'll come back and ask for authorization to start that time clock.
And this will come back to the council?
It will come back to the council. It has to come back to the council before we actually issue the sale.
Okeydoke. So any other clarifying questions from council?
I just want to make sure it is coming back to the council, and this starts the process in motion, and we'll wait for the right time, hopefully, and hopefully, the right time will come.
Yes, what you are authorizing today, as one of Wing C.'s colleagues likes to put it, is you're issuing the permit, your building permit, but it doesn't say you're actually building the building right yet, right? You're just getting the permission to do so. So what you are authorizing us to do right now is giving us the permission to go forward, and then before we actually sell, we will, we do have to come back to you, and that is written into the resolution.
Councilwoman Dutra?
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work. I know we've, I've had a couple meetings with staff and also you individually to go over this in detail. I appreciate all the work going into this and the balance that you have, you know, projected out that will also make sure that our community is moving forward with projects to be covered, as well as making sure that this is being, these needs are being met. So there is a light at the end of the tunnel. The tunnel might be a little bit longer than we want it to be, but I want to say thank you for all the hard work that you've done, and we will get over this. Thank you.
I'll move the resolution if that's what you need, Mayor.
Thank you very much. What, you were pointing out there? I didn't see. I, there's no public, I asked. That's okay. So we have a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you, Councilwoman Garcia. Any last comments or questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Dutra?
Aye.
Estrada?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hearst?
Aye.
Hidros Carter?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We're going to be moving on to 6B, the Watsonville 2021 Housing Element Annual Progress Report. We have Community Development Director Miriam and Housing Manager Len Deveri. Always welcome.
Ah, okay, better now.
Yeah, there you go.
Good afternoon. I'll start all over. Mayor Parker, council members. Carlos Deveri, Housing Manager. I'll be presenting the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2021. The state law requires all local governments to complete and submit a Housing Element Annual Progress Report by April 1st of each year. The Housing Element Report provides an overview of all the housing development activities for that year, including all applications, entitlements, permits issued, and any units that were completed. And it also provides a summary of any of the Housing Element goals that we met for that reporting year. And in the past couple of years, the report has added a couple of other requirements, including any SB 35 streamlining projects. And here we have one, the 1482 Freedom Boulevard Affordable Housing Project came under that, so we report on that. We also have to report on any surplus land that we have within the city and any of the LEAP reporting. The city did apply for a LEAP grant and was awarded $160,000 of that. We expect to spend that money this year, and we will report more on that for next year. But I'd like to start with the program goals because it includes all of the housing activities that we did last year. So in 2021, we approved five first-time homebuyer loans. We approved the sale of three affordable housing units or homes. We processed six housing rehabilitation applications. We monitored over 350 affordable housing units, and we leveraged city BG funds to assist low-income Watsonville residents with rental assistance, also to assist Parks and Recs Department code enforcement activities and some capital projects, including the restrooms at the Plaza, which should be completed soon. Continuing with more specific activities, we pre-qualified 13 families to be able to buy one of our affordable units. We processed 51 refinances and subordinations of affordable units. We processed 41 payoff demands. When someone takes out a loan or we financially assist them to buy a unit, they can always refinance and pay that city back. And so that's usually, that happens when they either sell or they refinance a unit and they pay us off, but we have to process. That's what we call serving a loan. Prices have been going up, interest rates are low, and so people are interested in knowing what their unit is worth. And so there's a mechanism to do that. We processed 78 maximum sale price calculations for our units. In 2021, we also did a lot of work with local nonprofits to leverage state funding for rental assistance. 270 families were assisted through that process in the tune of about $2.2 million for enforcement cases. We saw 374. Most of them were finalized. I believe their backlog, it's about 40 cases now. We also did a lot of work with two of our nonprofit developers, MidPen Housing and Eden Housing, both for the Miles Lane project and the 1482 Freedom Boulevard project. Those two projects are about to break ground, but we helped them through our efforts. We helped them obtain most of their funding, around $57 million for both projects. And we've been doing a lot of work on mobile home parks. There's one mobile home park in particular that has requested a rent increase, and there is a mechanism to do that through the municipal code, and we've been working with the city manager's office and a few other folks to get that process going. In the development activity, last year, we saw four major applications for a total of 223 units. That includes the MidPen project, the Eden project, 221 Airport, and 558 Main Street. All 223 units were approved. 124 units were entitled, including the project at 547 Airport Boulevard. Building permits issued, we issued 86 total, and units final, we had a total of 25. That includes five townhomes and 20 ADUs. Out of the 223 units proposed, this is the breakdown by income level. Both our Miles Lane and 1482 Freedom qualify as very low, they will be rented to very low-income folks, and that's the breakdown, including the project at 221 Airport, for a total of 223 units. And so based on that, this is how we look on our RENA requirements up to 2021. And just to bring you back to a little bit of historical background, we are on our fifth RENA cycle. We were required to have 700 units total by the end of 2021. We can only count 302 units towards that 700 requirement.
Could you repeat that?
Yes. So the fifth RENA cycle requires the city to produce or to make available 700 units total. At the end of 2021, we can count 302 units. Out of 700, that leaves a balance of 398. The new requirement or the new process for the Housing Element and the RENA allocations, they only count actual permits that the city issue. And so this year, we're anticipating, we're processing permits for Miles Lane, for 1482, 558 Main Street, and we have a few ADUs pending, so it'll be around 200 more units. The current RENA cycle ends next year, in 2023, and then we start our next cycle. And some of you, most of you, may know now that number, it'll be a little over 2,000. And anyway, it's hard, needless to say. All right, so here is our, a map of our current development. You already know all of those projects. But we have quite a few units, and if they all come to fruition, then we may meet our 700 number. And so here is some of our wishful thinking, well, at least for half of that slide. The first half, I think we are on track. 221 Airport Boulevard, it is under construction right now. We expect they be, they will be done by the end of this year or next year. 558 Main Street, no reason to believe that the developer won't complete that project by 2023. Same with Miles Lane and 1482 Freedom Boulevard. They have most of their funding, they're ready, they're set to break ground. And so the wishful thinking part is really for Sunshine Gardens and Hillcrest Estates. I am hoping, we are hoping, that they resume building this year or next year. And then 547 Airport, they're in the middle of a lawsuit, so who knows? Hopefully, it'll get resolved soon and they can, they can build. And so if that happens, if they, all of that comes into place and they pull permits by next year, we'll be able to count them. We may be able to meet to those numbers. Otherwise, it'll roll over to our next cycle. All right. And with that, this Housing Element Report was presented to the Planning Commission at their last scheduled meeting on March 1st, and they voted unanimously to recommend that the city council accept the 2021 Housing Element Annual Progress Report. With that, I'll conclude my presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from, clarifying questions? Yes. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. I actually had two questions, and you were able to answer one of them already. But in one of the charts you showed, if I understood correctly, 135 very low-income people qualified for housing? Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. And so my question is, how do they qualify?
So it's a little tricky. So in Watsonville, we have, so this is the two affordable housing projects, Miles Lane and Freedom Boulevard. And so the tricky part is that, to the state, we have to report our residents as low-income based on the county's median income. The projects, because they, the city has provided funds from our local funds, then the requirement is that their income limits meet the city of Watsonville income limits, which represent about 70% of the county's median income. And so those projects have to be, they have to be available to low-income residents per the state guidelines. But in doing so, when you look at the numbers, 80% of median income from the county really means it's a lower level, which really means very low income for the city of Watsonville. So that's, that's how we report them. And so that's why we would qualify them under very low.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dutra?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. What does monitor, you says monitored over 350 affordable, what does that mean? Like you looked over the applications or?
So it means, so every time someone buys an affordable unit, or they take out a loan from the city to buy their first home, or they rehab, they remodel their house, and we issued them a loan, then every year, we have to make sure of primarily one thing, that they live and occupy that unit as their primary residence. And so every year, we send out a packet letter-- And so every year, we send out a packet letter, and they have to submit some evidence to us, and so we have to, you know, besides just checking the box, we have to do a little due diligence, because every now and then, we find someone that doesn't really, they're not using that home as their primary home. And the idea for all of our programs is to help first-time homebuyers, and because we're using public funds, we have to make sure that they live and occupy that unit. That is not an investment, that they're not making money on public funds. And so we have to make sure that they, they live there.
Thank you. That makes sense. I, I could imagine it's a, a reasonable rent, and so if you want to sublet it after you maybe have collected a lot of money to buy your own place, or you've moved, then it makes sense like, oh, I have a friend that I would, so this prevents that from happening. And then I have, can you do me a favor and give me, or give us, an update on the Sunshine Garden and the Hillcrest status, please? And the litigation at 547 Airport?
Sure thing. Sunshine Gardens is actually back under construction. They're working on repairs to, to corrections from a few years ago, so that is actually moving forward. Hillcrest Estates, right now, the county and the city are reviewing the revised remedial action plan, and we are hoping to bring the development agreement for that project to council sometime in April. Cross?
What's that looking like? I mean, did they, did the county approve the land, or was it found to have contamination?
Well, we know, we know about the contamination out there. We've already got the soils report and, and the draft remedial action plan before, but what they found, where they, they kind of got into an issue is, is really a technical in that the county environmental health department only deals with dirt and contaminated soil. They don't deal with any structures. And so part of this burial pit that they're proposing in the remedial action plan has a retaining wall. And so what we've had to do is coordinate review between the city, who reviews the retaining walls, and the county, who looks at, at the actual overall plan itself. So there were some modifications that were required since it came to council last summer. They've been working on that, and it's, it's under review by the city and county right now. So no new news on soil or anything like that. It's just...
I feel these two projects have been going on for like, feels like decades, but I'm sure it's only been, you know?
Yeah.
Five, five, since I was on last time, so yeah.
547 Airport is the property that has the Rebar Company on Airport Boulevard.
Yeah, how's that looking, the litigation with the, with the airport?
I do not believe I'm at liberty to say.
Oh, oh.
We're currently on litigation, and we don't have a current update at this moment.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other council members who'd like any clarifying questions? Councilwoman Estrada?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your part. Gato los, Suzie. I, I just had a couple questions, I just one question on the ADUs. I just really would like to know how that's going, if that looks like a sort of a viable thing that could be developed even more, or, you know, I just was kind of interested to hear how the ADU situation is going here in the city.
Going great guns. I believe we had, what, 33 approved in 2021, and 20 something in 2020? So that is, that's proving to be a very popular, popular type of housing unit to be developed in, in the city of Watsonville. So we definitely see that, that trend continuing with the, the change to state regulations in the future.
Can I ask, what type of, like, what, what are some of the common ADUs that people are, are adding to their property?
It's, you know, it's a, it's all types. As you know, there, there are garage conversions that are allowed, so a lot of people are, are taking advantage of that, but there's also a lot that are just building freestanding ADUs, like, in, in the backyard. So it's, we're seeing kind of all, all types.
And what about maybe, I don't know what the word is here, but people that had pre-existing ADUs that were not permitted, how's that process going to maybe bringing those individuals in to get everything up to standard?
I do believe we've had several of those garage, kind of garage conversion legalization ADUs come in, in the last year.
Fantastic. That's good to hear. Thank you. Those are my questions, Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay. Oh, Councilman Hearst.
Well, just to follow up on that, I know there's a lot of issues in Freedom of, before it was annexed into the city, that many units were not conforming in some way, and how, how do they go about becoming conforming? They have to apply, or is it, how do we get notice of that? Or do we?
Well, if, if they were, if they were annexed into the city with a unit that was permitted under the county, like a second unit similar to an ADU, that would just no longer be considered non-conforming if it met ADU regulations. If a property were annexed into the city and it did not have a permitted second unit, those property owners could come in and, and apply to legalize those units.
So how do we make them aware that there is a process and maybe it'd be in their best interest to conform with that process or participate in it?
Yeah, my staff has put together a, a really great page on our website that has a lot of information on additional dwelling units and FAQs and, and that kind of thing.
Well, thank you very much, because I think there are a lot of unpermitted units in the city that could be brought into code if the property owners were willing to do so, and
Yes.
That kind of depends on them, but they need to know that there is a process and that it is actually feasible for them. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. As I conclude our clarifying questions, I'm going to go out to the public. Are any public speakers? Finding no public speakers at this time. I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion by Councilman Dutra. Do we have a second? And Councilwoman Estrada, seconds. Are there any other points of discussion before we vote? No? Oh, okay.
Well, I would just say that, you know, housing is so important for all the residents of our community, and, and I think that some people would benefit by watching this presentation. I, I hope that they'll have a chance to, and looking at the website particularly, and finding ways that they can help themselves, and when they help themselves, they help the whole community.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Dutra?
Aye.
Estrada?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hearst?
Aye.
Montesino?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. All right, so now, it is time for us to remove ourselves into closed session, and we will be back here at 6:30. Thank you very much. And we'll begin with roll call, if we could.
Here.
Estrada?
Present.
Garcia?
Here.
Hearst?
Here.
Montesino?
Kiros Carter?
Here.
Parker?
Here. All right, we need a motion to excuse absent council members.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Sorry. Dutra?
Aye.
Estrada?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hearst?
Aye.
Kiros Carter?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes. Thank you. We will now go on to presentations and oral communications. This time is set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item on the council agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented, except that any council member may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to council will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for a discussion at a future meeting, or referred to staff for clarification and report. All speakers are asked to fill out a speaker card and leave it at the podium. Speakers are asked to announce their name and district in which they live in order to obtain an accurate record for our minutes. And at this time, we, we will entertain any speakers and oral communications from the public. There is a limit of two minutes apiece. As a teacher, I'm just being reminded, we have a pledge of allegiance to do. Steve, would you like to lead us?
Yep.
Fix your career? Sure, why not? Would you all please stand, place your hand over your heart? I pledge allegiance to the United States
Of the United States.
America, and to the republic
For which it stands
One nation, under God Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Steve. And now we move on to public.
And it's so appropriate, in saying the pledge of allegiance, I want to thank Vanessa Kiros Carter for coming to our ceremony to bring up a brand-new gay pride flag at the Cabrillo campus in Watsonville, which was destroyed by vandals. Vanessa, thank you for being there. I also want to point out that we have a pioneer in the Watsonville GLBT movement. I'm sitting right in front of me, Jimmy Dutra. Thank you for all your work and all your efforts in order to make those of us who run for office also available, also able to run for office in Watsonville, because as you know, at one time, we couldn't do this. So thank you very much. It's greatly appreciated. I want to point out to you that there was a terrible, also a terrible incident on the Aptos campus, where there was terrible racist graffiti sprayed all over restrooms on the field, Collins Field, and that also was quite shocking because of its vile nature. And I just want to point out, as a Cabrillo trustee, District 7, folks, we're not living in 1922. This is 2022, and we will not accept that kind of behavior on our campus. Cabrillo stresses diversity, equity, and inclusion. Cabrillo College is for everyone. We accept all people. We are proud to be an open campus. We want you to come and enroll on our campus, come to events on our campus, and be a part of our campus. Now, I'm hoping we'll change the name of the college, hopefully to my choice of Natural Bridges Community College, but even so, need to know, you all need to know that we're there because we want our community to be involved, all of you. And we want you, all you members here of the city council, to make sure that you understand that that's how it is. Anyway, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for leaving us in the pledge. Do we have any other speakers?
Good evening. Nancy Bilisic, District 7. I just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow, the Paharo Regional Flood Management Agency meets right here in this room at 10 o'clock, and we're getting closer. This is composed of two members from Monterey County, two members from Santa Cruz County, and with your support, I sit on the, the board representing Watsonville, and the five of us are working to move forward with the levy plan. And I think between that and then, and we're having a plan again, trying to figure out the assessments and how much people are going to pay, that'll happen in the next, oh, probably month or so. So we're getting closer, and remember, this is a $400 million project. We have the support of the federal government with Jimmy Panetta's help and with Senator John Laird, the state, and Robert Rivas. We have $400 million, but we still need $1.2 million to finish the project, and that will come from the assessments. So I want everybody to know that, and we hopefully will go forward sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bilisic. All right, do we have any other speakers that would like to address the council? All right, seeing none, we'll move to, to our council. Councilwoman Kiros Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So can we, just as a point of order, can we get the timer? I'm not able to see it. That would be really helpful for the public. So I attended, on Saturday, February 26th, I attended a local business opening, and so it was a barber shop. It was Next Level 831, and it was a really wonderful event. It was a grand opening, and it was just really wonderful to see new businesses opening and flourishing, and I really want to encourage the public to support our local businesses. On Tuesday, March 1st, I attended the Watsonville Vision Zero Task Force meeting, which was held on Zoom, and they meet to discuss traffic issues and traffic safety issues, and I really encourage the public to attend these meetings if they can. And on March 7th, which was yesterday, I attended that, the pride flag raising, as Steve mentioned, at the Cabrillo Watsonville Campus, and I want to remind the public that hate crimes and hate does not... campus. And I want to remind the public that hate crimes and hate does not have a place in my district. It does not have a place in our community, and it will not be tolerated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hurst?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there are a lot of water that passed under the bridge in the last couple of weeks. And remember, Quiros mentioned a few of those things. I too was at the Cabrillo flag raising ceremony and felt the anguish and the frustration in the community. But I did get to go to the Saco Dinner as well, and that was well-attended and very productive. Legislative Tea, I thought, was very interesting with our elected representatives from the state bodies, our Assemblyman, representatives from Congress office, and local representatives as well. And so that was a busy time. Remember, Garcia and I did get to attend the Food Bank's Second Harvest 50th Anniversary, and we received this plaque, which highlights the contributions that Watsonville City has provided to the Food Bank over the years. And I'll just pass that down to the council members, so they can enjoy and see that. And I appreciate being able to present the proclamation to our Hunger Fighter of the Year at that. And thank Councilmember Garcia for her long service to the Second Harvest Food Bank. It's Women's History Month, and there's a lot of women making history in our community, and I want to salute them all. I would comment on my wife's illustrious career in this community, but she asked me not to mention her name, Wendy Hurst. And I do want to say that we are moving forward, and we have some special awards this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hurst. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. I attended nine meetings, both virtual and in person. For five years, I served as a Watsonville representative to the Youth Violence Prevention Network. The network decided we needed to involve youth more effectively into the organization, so it was transformed into the Youth Action Network. Students throughout the county applied and were selected to serve on YAN. There are four students from Watsonville who serve on YAN, who represent the different high schools and Cabrillo College. A jurisdiction representative committee was also formed that has a council member from Scotts Valley, Santa Cruz, Capitola, and Watsonville. In addition, it has a representative from the county and a representative from Congressman Panetta's office. Last week, we met for the first time with a youth steering committee. They asked each one of us several questions, including why we ran for city council, and our goals and accomplishments we want for our youth. I was able to talk about Summer in the City program, and one student was very interested in that internship be offered countywide. We will be meeting with the youth quarterly and bring back to council what actions we might need to take to meet their recommendations. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Estrada?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and joining us today. Today's International Women's Day, so I wanted to just congratulate and thank all of our hardworking, dedicated, community members, women that do a lot for our families, for our communities. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for all you do. A special shout-out to, as you can see, our clerk, our city attorney, our city manager, and our mayor are currently all women, and we are very proud of that fact. And congratulations as well to former Mayor Garcia and to Vanessa Quiros Carter. I also want to congratulate all the local teams that had great seasons in the winter sports. Obviously, I'd like to highlight Watsonville High School's great performance in both CCS and the following tournament that they participated in. Unfortunately, they were unable to win the championship, but our pride has never been greater, and we were just proud. We're proud of the young men that did their best, worked hard, and made it so far, and really, really just represented the best of our community. So thank you, and we will be seeing them soon, hopefully, here on council. And then finally, I know this happened a few weeks ago, but I do want to send my condolences to the family of former Mayor Judy Doring Nielsen. She passed away. And, you know, whether people at the end of the day agree or disagree with us, you know, to take that step, to be a public servant, is a lot of sacrifice. So regardless, you know, we should always be grateful and thankful for those that step up and really try to do something positive for the community. So those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dutra?
Thank you. I also wanted to say Happy International Women's Day. Thank you all to all the women out there who are working hard to keep families together while holding a job and, at times, being a Supreme Court Justice as well. So there are, we thank you, and you make our world a better place. I also want to say thank you and congratulations to our championship soccer team, Watsonville High School, for their CCS and CIF, you know, almost victory. So congratulations to the soccer team, and we look forward to having them come to the chambers. I also was part of, I attended PV Arts. They had a event last Thursday, I believe, and it was great to see the exhibit. You could actually buy the art and walk away with it. So it was, it was a nice, it was a nice, a nice gathering. It was a little raining, which kept people away, which is funny because it didn't rain that hard. But, you know, it was, it's nice to see the artists in our community be able to exhibit their art, and then people have the opportunity to buy it. And I, speaking in also about people who passed, I also wanted to highlight the fact that Steve Bankhead passed away as well, someone who was in our community, who, if you read the newspaper, he did a famous column where he would look back 25, 50, 75, and 100 years. And so he will be greatly missed in the community as, and also a part of our paper. So thank you very much, and I hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dutra. Just want to highlight a couple things, and I think our council has well-represented all the things that we did talk about. Since I've been here, we, last, I think we have attended a Metro Board, and I have attended a Regional Transportation Commission. So Councilwoman Dutra and myself have been representing South County for transportation issues, and we hope to do a lot more. And we appreciate all the support that we have received. I too went to Next Level 831. Providencia Alanas, her brother is one of the owners there, and Providencia was in my mom's fifth-grade class. So I made sure to stop in and say hello. And it's wonderful to see that. Today is International Women's Day. It's March 8th. And I wrote in my mayor's message in the Sentinel this weekend about a few, profiled a few of the wonderful women of Watsonville that we have. And I, there's a lot out there in the audience, but one of them is right here. It's our former mayor and current councilwoman, Rebecca Garcia. So if you haven't had a chance to read it, please do. I attended a Saco Dinner, our legislative lunch, with our, all of our legislators, Senator Laird, Assemblyman Rivas. Was excellent. Great communication that's happening for and about Watsonville. And lastly, oh, Roland Hedgepath and all those kids. I think Councilwoman Estrada, weren't you on the soccer team? With him at one point?
He did invite me to travel to Europe with him when I was in high school. I went to Aptos.
I just, we have a lot of talent up here, so I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you very much. And so as a former member of the Santa Cruz County Women's Commission, and we also have a current member, co-chair is our very own Vanessa Quiros Carter. And I'll stop to continue. I expect the public to do it. I will do it too. So thank you very much, and we'll move on to the report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We had a closed session on the item on the agenda, and no reportable action was taken.
Hello, hello? Yes. Now's the time I get to use a microphone out here. And I don't think I have a two-minute warning, do I? All right. So one of the things you get to do as mayor is you get to give proclamations honoring different individuals or causes. And our first proclamation, recognizing March 2022 as Red Cross Month. So accepting this will be Assistant Chief Tom Sims and Director Rayvon Williams. This proclamation is American Red Cross Month, March 2022. Whereas in times of crisis, our people have always come together to care for one another, and it is in the spirit of selflessness that is a founding block of our community, exemplified by American Red Cross volunteers and donors. And whereas American Red Cross was founded by Clara Barton in 1881, turning her dedication to helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. And whereas over 140 years later, we continue honoring Clara's legacy by recognizing the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers in Watsonville, who join millions across the United States in giving blood, donating financially, or learning life-preserving skills. And whereas the contributions of 189 volunteers in the county give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, and boy, we've had some in the last couple of years. Whereas last year, they aided 33 households affected by 24 home fires in addressing their urgent needs, such as food and lodging, as well as providing recovery support. And whereas they also collected over 3,900 blood donations, provided first aid and CPR training to more than 2,400 residents, helped the families of over 500 students prepare for disasters through the Red Cross Pillowcase Project, and assisted more than 40 families of our armed forces. And whereas the community's resilience strengthens through this work, as all Red Cross volunteers strive to follow in the footsteps of Clara, who believed in the importance of thinking of the need and how to meet it above all else. Now, therefore, I, Ari Parker, Mayor of the City of Watsonville and the State of California, on behalf of the city council, hereby recognize March 2022 as American Red Cross Month, and encourage all citizens to reach out and support its humanitarian mission.
Well, thank you. You're probably wondering why we, the airport director and a cop are up here accepting this. So Rayvon and I have been involved with the Central Coast Chapter of the American Red Cross as Board of Directors members for many years. And that's just how wonderful we think this organization is, and how proud we are to be able to stand up here and accept this proclamation. So thank you very much, Mayor Parker. The mission of the American Red Cross is very simple, although as simple as it is, I'm going to read it because I couldn't memorize it. And that is to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. Volunteers are what make organizations like the Red Cross move forward. And I will tell you just a couple highlights from this past year. Did you know that for the Red Cross, every eight minutes, a volunteer responds to a disaster around this country? Every two seconds, somebody within the U.S. needs blood. And that if you were to donate a pint of blood, that pint of blood could save upwards to three people who need it. As you mentioned, our Armed Services Division, since inception, we've actually served over 130 active service members and their families. So on behalf of the American Red Cross, thank you very much for this proclamation, and we'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Did you want to say something?
Oh, no, 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 no. I only have one thing regarding blood. The airport has partnered with the local chapter for the last four or five years to sponsor an airport blood drive. And we do it in association with the tenants on the field. And so we've tried to be creative every time we do it. And in the past couple of years, we've partnered with Watsonville Community Hospital and Beer Mule to offer a pint for a pint. So if you, if you like beer and have blood, which is, which is, which is possible, which is possible, March 26th, the blood drive is at the hospital. You can find details at the American Red Cross website for blood donating.
That sounds fun. Our next proclamation is in the spirit of International Women's Day. And we honor all women during this day, but we're going to honor one particular woman who has created so much volunteerism and so much good faith and positivity in our city. And her name is Barbie Gomez. Barbie, if you'd join me. And I know this is excruciating for her, so I'll take a long time. No, I won't. Okay. Whereas Barbie Gomez has always shown a passion for serving her community and making it a better place to live. Whereas Barbie is co-chair of Watsonville's Relay for Life and helps raise over $100,000 for cancer patients each year. And whereas in 2020, Barbie founded Project Edelweiss Care at the Church of the Nazarene, raising money to deliver groceries to residents during the pandemic. And whereas Barbie is also a youth group leader at the church and was involved in their trunk-or-treat event. And whereas Barbie is a past director for 831 Youth Sports League Flag Football, and currently serves as a director for their basketball hoops program. And whereas Barbie is a supporter of Teen Challenge Monterey Bay and assisted with their rescue mission banquet. And whereas Barbie's numerous other volunteer activities include adopting families during the holidays, organizing a book drive for Paro Valley Unified School District libraries, providing groceries to families in need through Pinta Lake Pantry, and directing this year's special needs prom. And whereas Barbie has made a huge impact through Girls' Squad Volunteer Group, whose 844 members donate their time, money, and energy to support various nonprofits as well as families. And whereas Barbie seeks to empower the women of Girls' Squad and all others by collaborating on the projects they take on, and is an inspiration to many, displaying admirable determination and enthusiasm in everything she does. Now, therefore, I, Ari Parker, one of her Girls' Squad members, Mayor of the City of Watsonville and the State of California, on behalf of the city council, hereby recognize Barbie Gomez in honor of International Women's Day for her selfless commitment and dedication to serving the community, and wishing for her to continue being part of it for many years to come.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor, Mrs. Parker, and city council members, and everybody else here in attendance. Honestly, this proclamation, I do want to dedicate to our Girls' Squad women. And I'll tell you, what a tremendous difference we've made since this whole COVID pandemic. And I'll tell you, looking up here and seeing our women leaders, they're right there with us. This town is so united more than ever, and I'm just so honored and proud to be part of it. So I love our town. I love these people who lead us. Know you're in our prayers constantly, daily, and together, we're going to just continue to grow and make a difference in our hometown. We love it here, and thank you, everybody.
Can somebody get a picture of us? Come on up here. Yes. You want to go up on the other side? Yeah. There we go. I'm okay with that. I think that's great.
I've already asked her.
One day. All right. So we've had some great proclamations. And also, this one's a big one. Okay. I'm going to ask our city clerk, Beatrice Vasquez Flores, to come on down. So today, our city clerk, Beatriz Vasquez Flores. Beatriz has served the City of Watsonville and its residents with dedication, loyalty, responsibility, ethics, and passion for 41 years. And whereas Beatriz has always worked to make local government accessible to the community and has achieved it through forward-thinking and transparency in all processes. And whereas in recent years, Beatriz's office has implemented software programs such as Escribe, a meeting management software which allows the public to view meetings in real time, and council to access packets through their electronic devices. And whereas as Records Management Officer, Beatriz ensures the secure keeping of the city's records following the appropriate retention schedule. And whereas Beatriz was instrumental in making voting available to all members of the public by providing early and weekend voting services and along with her staff, going the extra mile to problem-solve, educate, and encourage resident involvement. And whereas Beatriz led Watsonville's Sister City Program, developing policies that have supported the city's ability to enter into sisterhood agreements with the cities in El Salvador, Mexico, China, Japan, Croatia, and Portugal. And whereas during her tenure, Beatriz helped guide critical changes and work on redistricting, census transitions to district elections, and amendments to the city charter among various others. And whereas Beatriz is respected and admired by city employees and city council people, as many of them sought her advice and guidance and count on her vast experience. And whereas Beatriz was always willing to mentor her junior staff, considering their career development and growth as individuals. And whereas Beatriz has been for many years a pillar of the city and will be dearly missed by all her colleagues, who consider themselves fortunate to have been able to collaborate with such a trustworthy, knowledgeable, and consummate professional as herself. Now therefore, I, Ari Parker, Mayor of the City of Watsonville of the State of California, on behalf of the City Council, hereby recognize city clerk Beatriz Vasquez Flores for her decades of unparalleled commitment and service to her community and wishing her the best in her well-earned retirement. And if some people want to take some pictures. Okay, I want to give you the opportunity to speak, but we're going to give the public the opportunity to speak too. And so you might want to say a few words at the end.
Mayor? Mayor? You want to watch the video first?
Oh, well, that's all dependent upon this young lady. You want to watch? Okay, let's watch the video.
I'm Beatriz Flores. I've been with the city for almost 41 years. I started with a summer program when I was 18 years old. A year later, I got a full-time job, and I've been here ever since. So in the police department, I was working in the records department. And I wanted to venture out, and the city clerk at that time asked me if I wanted to transfer to her office. And I said yes, because I wanted the challenge of a new job. As the city clerk, my responsibilities are to support the council and have to make sure that the agendas are posted, that the council meetings are open and transparent to the public. I'm also in charge of the elections. As I said before, I started here when I was very young, so of course, my school had to be done while I was working. I actually got my BA in 2015 after my kids were grown, and I took specialized training to be a city clerk. You have to learn a lot of laws. I love the city that I work for. I live here. My kids were raised here. I went to the schools here. My kids did too. When I first started here and I would hear people that were here for five years, I would say, they're crazy. How can they be here for five years? Here I am, 41 years, and it doesn't seem like that. It's just barely getting to me that I am leaving. I still don't really believe it. I'm still working as if it was my first day. And I am very grateful for the city for allowing me to make my life here. Every morning when I get up, I'm happy to come in, and that's what's going to be the hardest, because I love the people who I work with and the work that I do. See you later!
Bea, I'd like to invite you up to say a few words, but there's a lot of people here who also want to talk about you. So there you go.
Hi, everyone. I have been working for the City of Watsonville 42 years. In the video, it says 41, but I actually started part-time a year before. I began my journey right, well, hold on, I need to. Right out of high school at the police department as a police clerk. I never imagined that I could be standing here 42 years later. And the reason I finally realized why is because I love this community. And I love serving the community where I grew in. I would like to thank every person who throughout these years supported and helped me along the way. The people who saw my potential when I did. Police Sergeant Consolli, Police Lieutenant Kersey, personnel officers Ann McPike and Mary Ellen Ash. Former city clerk Lorraine Washington and former city manager Carlos Palacios, who encouraged me and prepared me to become a city clerk. Former city attorney Alan Smith, who taught me how to read code sections and decipher them word by word. And allowed me to interpret the law and kindly correct me when I was wrong. I would be remiss not to thank the council who appointed me in 2008. Members Capet, Versamin, then Peterson, Rivas, Rios, and Skelacorn. For giving me the opportunity to serve my city, including all the council members, former council members that I have served during my 14 years as city clerk. Especially, I want to thank you, my current council members, for your dedication and commitment to our city. To my former city managers who saw my advice and made me feel that my opinion mattered. I want to thank all the department heads, former and current, for always working to keep the city going. Special thanks to Tamara and Natalie, for not only my colleagues, but also my dear friends, who are always ready to listen and lend a shoulder to cry. I want to thank my staff, Irwin, Alejandra, and Roxana, who were always willing to take all the new functions and technology that I was always implementing. Without you, we would not be able to serve the community as we do. All the city employees who serve the city and give their time and heart. To Riera and Michelle for this beautiful video that my family and I will forever treasure. To my mom and my sister Sofia, for taking care of my sons when I couldn't and never complaining for being my son's second mom. My brother Enrique for spending many nights just listening and sharing words of wisdom. To my sister Alicia for her example to follow, to always be learning. And to my dad for being my role model and for teaching me that hard work pays off. And last but not least, I want to thank my husband for supporting me throughout the years, whether working or studying, for taking over the household chores and for taking care of my sons. All those late nights and weekends when I wasn't home. Of course, to my sons, Ivan, Christian, and Kevin, for understanding the demands of my job and for knowing that it didn't matter what, I would always run home if you needed me. For Christian, for not being ashamed to take college classes with your mom and staying up nights to help me with my homework. Without you, I may not have earned my college degree. Thank you for all my family members who are here today. Tamara and Alan. I'm going to miss everyone. I'm going to miss coming into work and saying good morning. I'm going to miss the wonderful sunsets as I left every afternoon and the winter evenings. This place is not only my work. I will continue to care about my city, and I will be willing to help my community.
All right. As I head back up here, I want to be able to offer the opportunity, as soon as I get back up, for the public and the council to be able to make some comments. But our city manager pro tem, Tamara Vides, would like to say something.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a lot I would like to say, and it's so hard, because there are so many memories and so much work and so many hours we have shared together here, Bea. I have seen you support our staff, our councils, and I have seen you support the community at large with so much heart and so much caring. It's amazing. I know, Beatriz, that you will be missed. You will be missed without a doubt, not just because you've been here 42 years and we are used to seeing you for a long time, but you're going to be missed because of so many qualities that you have that we admire and we love. Your gentle touch, your unique way of ensuring that everybody is taken care of and that Watsonville residents have access to good government. Your work is to be admired, and I do admire you. You care for all of us when we needed you the most, personally and professionally. You have been an incredible public servant, a loyal friend, an amazing boss, very caring, an awesome teammate. And I am sad, and I cannot stop crying to know that you're leaving, but I want you to know that I am incredibly happy for you, and I want to congratulate you, and your retirement is well-deserved. You earned it, and I will see you around in Watsonville, I have no doubt of that. We love you, Bea.
Thank you. Counsel, I'm going to go out to the public and have them. Is there anybody in the public who would like to address our city clerk? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. Beatriz, congratulations on your retirement. It's well-deserved. My name is Marcela Thancis. We had a wonderful 25 years of me working upstairs with you. You did a wonderful job for the city and for all of us in administration. And filling your shoes will be hard, but it'll be done, just like we did it for Lorraine. We just fall in love with our city clerks every time, and it's hard to let them go. But thanks for everything you did for us and for the community. We appreciate it, Bea. You did good. Take care.
Hey, everyone. My name is Tony Nunez. I'm the managing editor of the Pahronian Newspaper and the news editor at the Santa Cruz Good Times. Bea, I just want to thank you. I took over this position here with the Pahronian in 2018, and I asked the former editor Eric just how to do this job correctly, and he said, why don't you reach out to Beatriz? And you've been nothing but helpful to me over these last, what's it been now, five years? You know, I think that every single public servant should try to strive to be as responsive as you are, as helpful as you are. And so congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for everything you did for the city. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I had the honor to work with you for nine years while I was on council and as the mayor too. There are so many things that come up, but I always knew, all I had to do is pick up the phone, and you were right there. And I greatly appreciate the time and effort you put into your position. So congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Beatriz, I'm going to read this in Espanol. Gracias por todo. Has hecho un gran trabajo y ganaste el triunfo final. Ningún otro empleado de la ciudad ha dado tanto como usted ha hecho por la ciudad de Watsonville. What this says, and the reason why I said it in Spanish first is because when I first came here, we had most of the meetings in English. We did not have the translator. So Beatriz had a lot to do with bringing that here, and it's really important for people to know that. El último triunfo means the ultimate triumph. Beatriz has seen, and I should introduce myself, right? Former Mayor Versamin, along with former Mayor Rivas. I served on this council almost 10 years because of the leaving of Rafael Lopez, and then I got another eight. So I sat in that chair right there for almost 10 years. And the public doesn't always know that sometimes you get really good council members, and sometimes you get troublesome council members. And Beatriz had to deal with both the good ones and the troublesome ones. And at times, I was a troublesome one. I have to admit it, too. But Beatriz, the final victory is yours, because you outlasted everybody.
Yeah, that's true.
The longer you outlast these folks, too.
Oh, yeah.
So the most important thing is, no one's done more for the city than you have. Thank you for being the one Latina in a position of influence when I first came, because that taught me that I needed to bring la raza here during my years here. And for you guys, your family, aquí está la alcaldesa. The city clerk is always the unnamed mayor of the city. So now that Al's gone, now that Carlos is gone, and now that you're leaving, I can't say anymore that, oh, Carlos is gone, Al's gone, the city's in good hands. Now you're leaving too, so I hope you guys pick a great city clerk like she was for us. I was going to get you something, some flowers, but I figured you could eat these, right?
Thank you.
So I think I'll give them to your family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beatriz, that was very emotional on my part. Thank you for that. Mayor Parker, council, staff, members of the public, and Ramon. Alan Smith, I'm here to congratulate Beatriz on successfully completing her amazing career. I'm so happy for you. I worked with her for most of it. She was a high school intern at the start and we didn't know each other at the beginning. I came into the office, Beatriz had a job, I had a job to do. We were kind of thrown together by the circumstances, but it has been a rewarding experience for me personally and professionally, and I hope also for her. We shared a lot together. We never socialized outside work though. We have had a close personal and professional relationship and I consider her a good friend. Talked at work about our kids. I watched she and Ramon raise hers and she watched Barb and I raise ours. Here are some things I especially admire about Beatriz. There are many. First of all, the importance she places on education, both academic and professional. She realizes, realizes how much it matters, especially for people who find access challenging. Secondly, I never saw her have a bad day at the office. She always laughs when I say that. But it's true. I'm sure she did, but it never seemed to allow her to interfere with her work. We argued with each other sometimes, but we laughed together even in the most exasperating circumstances. Sometimes we laughed because of the exasperating circumstances. And third, the importance she placed on following the law, especially this, okay? Especially the Elections Code, the city charter, to provide access to the ballot box. She realizes how important it is for people to believe elections are free, open, and fair and for candidates and proponents of ballot measures to understand the process. She knew it was important even before recent events. So congratulations, Beatriz. I'm very happy for you.
Thank you, Alan.
Felicitaciones en tu jubilación. It was great to knowing you and as a city clerk and being the former mayor and city council, like Manuel Bersamin has stated. You are a person that, that really care for this community. Eres una persona que realmente quiere esta comunidad. It is important that, as you've grown through, throughout the years since you were 18 years, now 42 years, working with the city of Watsonville, it's almost like this is your home. Realmente es como tu casa. And that you really care for this community a lot. The times that we talk and, you know, we meet, we talk about your son going to college and all that kind of stuff, you know, it was so great to see that passion that you have to make sure that your kids get an education. Es muy importante cuando hablabas acerca de tus hijos que siguieran su educación. It is important that I all can say, you're a leader within our community, especially the day of the International Woman. You're one of the leaders in this community and you continue to mentor other women throughout the city. Es importante, es very important como líder en esta comunidad. Siento de que vamos a perder algo, pero I know we gain, we learn, we, we laugh, we cry sometimes as a city clerk because of the frustrations that we have faced. But in reality, you are a really professional woman that was able to give to the city all the love that you really wanted to give to our city. Que realmente, es una persona que es muy profesional y al mismo tiempo lo dabas con amor a esta ciudad. We're going to miss you. I think the city is going to miss you, the staff is going to miss you, everybody's going to miss you, especially como Latina, como Chicana, como líder en esta, en esta, en esta comunidad. It's important that, that we continue to have Latinos, Chicanas, and Chicanos within the city, working as leaders and as you have done. I hope we get that. Continue, I hope the city council and the city manager now, Tamara, very proud of you and what you have accomplished throughout the years. And I know you for a long time too. It's important that we continue on. Es importante seguir empleando personas que sean latinas, chicanas, en esta ciudad porque es la mayoría aquí en esta ciudad. It's important. But at the same time, you know, I think the city council, the present city council is important to be able to see a person that really cares for the community and loves the community. It's very important to see that. We saw that in Beatriz when we really, the city council at that time, like Carlos Bersamin, Carlos Palacios, everybody saw of Beatriz that she was a person from this community and that they cared for the community. Es lo que vimos en ella. Vimos que ella era una persona que realmente iba a beneficiar esta comunidad. So gracias, Beatriz. Enjoy your retirement. Take care of yourself, take care of your children. And now, I think, tu esposo te va a querer más por estar en la casa. I think so. Pero es importante, verdad? But I think, you know, your children, I think, love you and your husband loves you and all of that, what you have accomplished throughout the years. So es importante que sigas adelante y gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, good. I hope he's coming to speak. The little one, I was listening to him. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Flores. I'm Beatriz's son. Very, very, very proud of my mother today. I used to think I understood what sacrifice was until I became a father myself, so I understood. I understand a lot more now. A lot of those pictures that they showed, I'm very familiar with those places as well. Some of the desks that my mom used to have back when she was working over at the police department. I would, I would, I would wait there before I would go to school. So I'd get there early with my mom, get to run into everybody there. And that's where my love for this community really was inspired. And I'm just so thankful for my mom for doing all those things. Yeah, the education that she, not enforced in us, but inspired in us. She would get home late, of course, as you all know, and she would help me stay up to do my homework those days. She would be working on her homework and I would be working on mine together. And every time I used to think that the homework was a little too hard or anything, I would look over and I would see my mom. And it would inspire me to keep going. And that's the last thing. I'm just so, so, so happy for you now, for you to enjoy your rest now and we'll be able to spend that time with you. You want to say something?
My name is Kalia Flores. I am the granddaughter of Beatriz and I... I know she's been working in this place for so long, 42 years. I remember some nights when I would just like cuddle up with them sometimes and like when my brother was going to be born. Um...
Thank you. All right. I want to be able to invite the family down in just a moment to take a big picture with council and with Bee. But I know the council's been waiting patiently to be able to say some words to Bee. I could just start here.
I'm so emotional from all this. You have a wonderful family. I, I've had the pleasure to work with you since 2014-ish and so many things. You, you, you serve with grace and you're so positive and it's so amazing how there could be such a major problem and you calmly can find a perspective of it that, and a solution. And I always thought that was like your superpower, so. I'm going to miss you. I think I've been in denial. I, 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 yeah, I say it to you and, but I've had such wonderful conversations with you, you know? You're always here working late. You give your heart and soul to this community. You know, when I get off work, that's the, one of the times I can come in here is afterwards and you're here all the time and I just, I'll, I'll miss our conversations. Whoever fills your shoes better get ready because I'm going to be filling, I'm going to be sitting in that office talking to them till late at night. And then, and I also want to say thank you for what you did for the Portuguese community, helping create the sister city, one of your last, you know, well, your last sister city. And we're really appreciative of it. And you've left such a big mark on this community. I mean, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be different without you, you know, especially since we, all three positions are now going to be new people. It's like you're the last, you're that final chapter, you know? And you'll be missed. Thanks, Bee.
Councilman Estrada?
Thank you, Mayor. Beatriz, I have nothing but loving gratitude for everything you've, you've done, not, not just for me, but for the community. You know, I think there's always this perception, right, that staff, that city council is always up to something, you know? And that's really, that couldn't be, that's the farthest thing from the truth. We have amazing people like you, born and raised in this community, that love this community, that have seen so many changes in this community. And I think ultimately you only want the best for this community and that's something that I, I think always made it easy to talk to you, to connect with you. You know, especially when I first came in and I, you know, I absolutely knew nothing about how local government worked. I think I was lucky to have a steward of democracy like you to help me, to guide me, to really get the best out of all of us and by extension, on behalf of the community. And so, I, I will fondly remember our time in Mexico, visiting Chakan, going to your office, chatting, the FPPC forums that drive us crazy. You know, resetting my password for all that, you know, I always appreciated that, you know? But I, I think that our loss is your family's gain and your family has been patiently waiting for you to be home, to just, to be with them, to create new memories with them. And I'm, I'm very excited for you. I'm very excited for your future. I, I hope we will continue our friendship beyond our time here in the chambers. And, you know, on behalf of the community, on behalf of a lot of people, especially young people like me that, well, youngish, that, you know, we're still trying to find sometimes our place, our voice, our identity. You really are a role model for, for many of us and, you know, you're, you're living proof of what perseverance can, can get you. So thank you for everything and thank you.
Councilwoman Garcia?
When you heard the proclamation, there was a lot of whereas regarding how Beatriz served administration, served staff, and served the council. But she also served the community and I want to give you an example of one particular incident where I just was in awe in terms of how she served the community. I was meeting in the council room with four students, male students from Watsonville High School, and they were all excited because they had decided for a project that is required for graduation, they had decided they wanted to put a measure on the ballot, and this was regarding housing. And what do I know about putting a measure on the ballot? So I take them over to Beatriz's office and she's busy, but she sees this four young men there. She stopped doing whatever it was she was doing and she gave total attention to these four young men. And she went step by step to tell them, these are all the things you have to do to put a measure on the ballot. And they looked at each other and they just thought, oh my God, we can't do that. So they went to Plan B and decided to do a survey instead. And so, you know, just the fact that she would take time from her busy schedule to give time to four young students just said so much about her. And on a personal level, for some reason, I tend to come up with a lot of questions and/or problems on the weekends. And more than once occasion, I will text her and I say this, this, and this. And it doesn't matter if it's Saturday day or night, or Sunday day or night, Beatriz will always respond. And more than once I asked her, what are you doing responding to me? You're supposed to be relaxing for the weekend, but no. She worked 24/7. She really did. So I just say, you're going to love retirement. You really are. So buena suerte.
Councilman Hearst?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Beatriz. You know, 44 years or 42 years or any years in any profession is quite an accomplishment, but especially in public service that you've done. You kept more people out of trouble and not just the council and not just the management, you kept the public out of trouble many times in steering them in the right direction when they had some kind of crazy schemes that they wanted to pursue. And you were always very kind and gentle with everyone and, you know, your, your legacy is, is, is a tremendous, tremendous thing. And when I came into office in 1989, you were already well in your career, but you had a mentor, Lorraine Washington, and she was the greatest of city clerks as well. And you just absorbed everything that Lorraine had to offer and was able to change with the times so well. And so, we congratulate you, we salute you. I, I think you're full of history and innovations at the same time. You're, you're one in a million in this community and what a role model for every young woman out there in the audience and your grandchildren. You're going to just love being, having free time with them. I want to thank former Mayor Bersamin and, and former Mayor Rivas for attending this evening and, and our former city attorney, Smith. You know, they, they came out of retirement to, to be here this evening or out of their former offices and, and I think that speaks volumes about your contribution to the community. So I say, good luck, congratulations, and just continue to be that role model in the community that you are here in your official capacity. Thank you, Beatriz.
Thank you, Councilman Hearst. Councilwoman Kiroskarja?
Wow, well, I don't know that I can add much to what has already been said, but in the short time that I have known you, Beatriz, I have seen you lead with grace and humility and we've had some good chats. And I think your story is really a story of Watsonville. You are just extraordinary. Hard work, dedication, 42 years, and your professionalism, your warmth, you are just incredible. And in all my interactions with you, I've just felt so supportive. You're so responsive. You treat everyone with dignity and we're very sad to see you go and I hope that you can see how, how loved you are. And that's what's really coming through tonight. So... So congratulations on your retirement. Use it well. Find some great new hobbies and enjoy your free time. So congratulations. We will miss you.
Bee, all I can say is, I mean, these folks said it all. We had our former mayors, three of them here, who said quite a bit. And as the current mayor, all I can say is, why during my year? No, I'm just, I appreciate the fact you're always there. You may be on vacation, like in Paris, and I accidentally call you for a question. And these things happen. And you always answer. And I have to say, you've been very welcoming, very educating, with great humor. And I have appreciated all of it. I would like to invite the entire family and whoever else would like to be in the picture of her former colleagues as well, but her family, to come down here, if you would. Bring the kids. And Bee, come on, join me in the center. We're going to do this. And if some of her other colleagues would like to be in it, we're going to take a big, nice picture. How's that? Yeah?
Good job.
It's International Women's Day, and you're the woman. All right?
Nice job, Mayor. Nice job.
Oh, we just celebrated Bee for like an hour. But I'm OK with that. We're not going to have another chance to do it. That's right. So we're going to be moving. Thank you, everyone. And it was nice to see you all.
Thank you.
We are moving on to our public hearings, ordinances, and appeals. We have our public hearing regarding Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Study and an updated Park in lieu and park impact fees. This is recommended by Parks and Community Services Director Kalubakib. Am I, did I say it wrong?
You're getting closer and closer every time.
OK, I'm going to make it. And I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor Parker. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Nick Kalubakib, Parks and Community Services Director for the city of Watsonville. Again, congratulations, Bee. We're going to miss you more than you know. I'm here tonight, joined by one of my teammates, along with our consultant from NBS. And I'd like to allow them to introduce themselves before we move further into the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Adriana Flores. I'm the Senior Administrative Analyst for the Parks and Community Services Department.
Good evening, Mayor Parker, council members. My name is Joe Colgan. I'm representing NBS. And we were the consultants for the impact fee study.
The recommendation that we have before you tonight is that the council first adopt a resolution approving the Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Study that Joe just alluded to, dated January 18th, and prepared by NBS Government Finance Group. This study, it's what's used to determine the fees that the city can charge in terms of park development impact fees. The next two recommendations are in reference to the adoption of two separate ordinances. The first is to add Chapter 15 entitled Park Development Impact Fees of Title III, and also repealing Articles 5 and 6 to Chapter 6 of the Watsonville Municipal Code. And secondly, to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 6 of Title 13 by repealing Article 2 in its entirety and replacing it with a new Article 2 entitled Quimby Park Land Dedication and Fees in lieu. So there are two separate ordinances that establish two separate sets of fees. And then finally, to adopt a resolution that approves the recreation impact fees that financially mitigate parks and recreation facilities and approving Quimby in lieu fees. So that last resolution actually sets the fees that are put into motion by the two ordinances that you have before you this evening. We'll cover this again throughout the presentation and we'll clarify any questions as we get to the end of this. I know there's a lot kind of packed into this recommendation. So I'm going to start by reviewing a little bit of a background and talk a little bit about our fees that are in existence currently. So our parkland dedication and in lieu fees, as they stand today, are charged to developers. So they're charged to individuals, companies, organizations that create new developments within our city, primarily residential developments. And these fees were first established back in 1974 and have been in place, obviously, for many years. They were last reviewed and updated, though, in 2008. So it's been quite some time since the council has taken a look at these fees and updated them to today's standards and today's market. Over the past 20 years, since fiscal year 2001, the fund has received in revenue about $3.6 million. And from that fund, we've spent about $6.8 million to expand and renovate our park spaces throughout the city of Watsonville. So that $3.6 million that we brought in creates an average of about $227,000 that the city has collected over the past 20 years. And that money has been spent to really support three major projects over that 20-year time span. So we used it to create Franchise Park, to remodel Callahan Park, and then finally to build the new skate park at Ramsey that you see on your screen right now. In terms of our current needs and really kind of the reason why we have this item before you tonight is really to increase the revenue that our city brings in to help support the expansion of Parks and Recreation Services here in our community. As many of you on the council have heard me speak about many times, our city parks have an estimated $20 million in deferred maintenance. That's kind of just become a backlog over the many years of, let's say, kind of subpar funding for our Parks and Recreation Services. And on top of that, our community has really kind of inequitable access to Parks and Recreation Services when compared to other jurisdictions, especially jurisdictions of our size. So our Watsonville residents have access to about two and a quarter acres of parkland per 1,000 residents. Our 2005 City General Plan calls for a goal of five acres per 1,000 residents. So we're about halfway to that goal that was set many, many, many years ago. And compared to the national average of cities across the United States of 10 acres per 1,000 residents, we're definitely a far cry from reaching kind of that threshold. Watsonville has 143 acres of parkland. And if you compare that to the city of Santa Cruz's 1,700 acres for, you know, a city that's just up the highway with a similar-sized population, I think that really just underscores the disparities that our community faces in terms of access to park space, let alone quality park space. And these historical and systemic inequities really have a direct relation to both individual and community health and well-being. So the purpose of the recommended actions tonight are intended to, one, update our city's ordinances to create better parity and synergy with current state legislation, including current legislation that's going into effect later this year, that is going to require cities to assess impact fees by square footage instead of per bedroom. And then it's also to modernize our city's fee structure to really help us increase revenue to work on expanding access to quality parks and recreation spaces for our community. These actions that we're recommending tonight also support many of the goals and priority areas that are outlined in the council's strategic plan, all of which you can see on your screen here. But the main one really is fiscal health, with the council's stated goal of really working towards sustainable park funding. And with that said, I'm going to turn things over to our consultant, Joe, from NBS, who's going to walk us through the Recreation Impact Fee Study that helps us to determine our fees that we're recommending this evening.
Thank you, Nick. I want to begin by talking about the two broad classes of fees that are addressed in this impact fee study. The first set comes under the Quimby Act, which authorizes a city or a county to require residential subdivisions to dedicate land or pay fees in lieu of dedication to acquire parkland for the city. Other set of fees are impact fees, which are governed by a different set of laws. And they may be used for a variety of purposes. In this case, we're talking about just parks and recreation purposes, but impact fees may be used for a wide variety of other types of public facilities. So starting with the Quimby Act, it's part of the Subdivision MAP Act. It dates back to the 1970s, and it applies only to residential subdivisions. In other words, a project, residential project that has to go through the process of subdividing land is the only type of development that is subject to Quimby Act dedication or in lieu fee requirements. So the city may either require dedication of land for parks or payment of fees in lieu of dedication, or in some cases, a combination of the two. And the purpose of the land or the fees is to create neighborhood or community parks. So by definition, in lieu fees are based on the cost of the land that would otherwise be dedicated. Now, the way that the in lieu fees are, well, actually, the way that either the parkland dedication requirement or the in lieu fees are calculated are based on the relationship between population and park acreage, usually stated as acres of parkland per 1,000 population, or sometimes it's converted into a per capita requirement. So the requirement is based on the existing ratio of park acres to population. However, that's within a range. The Quimby Act specifies that the city could use a minimum of three acres per 1,000. And the current ratio is slightly below that. It's about 2.82, I think. Or a maximum of five acres per 1,000. So even if the existing standard was greater than five, you could only require five acres under the Quimby Act. So the in lieu fees are based on the acres per capita standard, land value per acre, and population per unit. And I'll talk a little bit in more detail about that as we go down this slide. So there are two ways, really, that the fees, in lieu fees, can be assessed. Some cities apply, create a fee schedule based on an estimated citywide average cost of land. However, other cities, including Watsonville, establish the land value per acre on a project-by-project basis, based on the land under the project that's being developed. So at the bottom, the last point shows a hypothetical calculation based on .003 acres per capita, which is three acres per 1,000 residents, $500,000 per acre, which is not the actual number that we use in the study, but for simplicity, I rounded, used a round number, and three people per unit. And the calculation at the bottom just shows that that would end up requiring a fee of $4,500 per unit. So a few takeaways about the Quimby Act. Number one, we think Quimby Act is the best tool available to acquire parkland from residential subdivisions. And I think a number of attorneys think it's the only way that the law, that the city is required to use that law in order to get parkland from subdivisions, residential subdivisions. But I think there are attorneys who may disagree with that. The second point is that there's an advantage to using the Quimby Act, which allows the ratio of three acres per 1,000, even if the base ratio is lower. And there's some flexibility as to how in lieu fees may be used. The language of the Quimby Act does provide that the fees may be used to improve or rehabilitate existing parks, either instead of or in combination with the acquisition of land for new parks. Now, moving on to the second type of fees, impact fees. So again, in the realm of parks and recreation facilities, I'm showing here four different types of facilities that are used in this study, that impact fees are used for in this study. One is to construct park improvements. That's a big, a big part of the cost is there. To construct community centers and recreation facilities, which is also another sizable portion of the fee. To acquire park maintenance vehicles and equipment, which is quite a small fee, but significant in terms of aiding the city's ability to keep up with the maintenance of the land, or the parkland that's being acquired. And then the fourth point is to acquire land from projects not involving a subdivision. So there may be residential development projects that don't have to go through the subdivision process and therefore are not subject to the Quimby Act. In those cases, the city can charge an impact fee to acquire parkland from those projects. So there are a couple of different types of laws that govern impact fees. You have constitutional case law, and you have the Mitigation Fee Act, which is our state impact fee statute. And they essentially both say the same thing. The term nexus is used in case law. And in our state law, there are requirements that the city demonstrate a reasonable relationship between impact fees and the needs that are created by a development project. So the three points that are listed on this slide are the three elements of the nexus or reasonable relationship. The first is that development must create a need for the facilities to be funded by the fees. Development must benefit from those facilities. And the third point is that impact fees must be proportional to the impact of the particular project that's paying the fees. So a bit about calculating the impact fees. AB 602, which was passed toward the end of last year, requires impact fees to be based on the existing level of service, which actually is how we normally do it anyway, unless some other basis can be justified. And there are times when establishing an existing level of service for certain types of facilities is tricky. So, but for parks and recreation, it works perfectly well. So for parkland and improvements, the impact fees are typically based on an existing ratio of park acres to population. Then when we get to recreation facilities, we normally base the calculations on the relationship between the existing population and the value of existing community and recreation facilities. And the reason for doing it that way is that there can be such a variety of different types of facilities that cost is kind of the common denominator. With parks, it's easy to use acres. But with other types of facilities, cost is much more flexible as a way to measure the level of service. So population per unit, as Nick mentioned, the city's existing park fees are based on the number of bedrooms per unit. In this study, we created ranges of square feet per unit. And then for each of those ranges, there's a population per unit that we estimated. And that's based on the mix of existing units. And that’s based on the mix of existing units, using some census data on the mix of existing units by the number of bedrooms. And then we worked through that to get to population-per-unit estimates for each of those square-footage ranges. And that’s tied back to the population of the existing population of the city and the existing number of units and so on. So this is the table that shows. I won’t go through this in detail. I know you want to expedite this a bit. So this is just a table we used, shows kind of the steps we went through for each of these square-footage ranges to get to the population per unit, which is shown in the right-hand column. And finally, this is a table which shows the end result of our calculations. So it shows for each range of dwelling unit square footages. First, the shaded column shows, because the Quimby in lieu fees are calculated on a case-by-case basis, the shaded column shows what the acres-per-unit requirement is for each of those categories. Then beyond that, moving to the right, you see the parkland impact fee per unit for projects not involving a subdivision. Then the park improvement impact fee per unit, which applies to all residential development. I can apply that. Obviously, that’s up to you to make the decisions about what fees you want to adopt. And then the next column shows the impact fee for community and recreation facilities. And the total column at the right sums the three, the last three columns. And with that, I’ll turn it over to Adriana, who will take you through the rest of the presentation.
Okay, so to summarize what Joe just presented to us, we’ve created this chart. Just wanting to emphasize that the fees are charged for developers of residential construction only. And I’ll go through each fee that Joe just went through. The first one is the Quimby Act. Developers will be either subject to the Quimby Act program or the parkland impact fee, not both. When will be, who will this be imposed on? New residential subdivision development. And again, note that the Quimby Act requires a land dedication. The in lieu fee is an option instead of a land dedication. And what does it pay for? The dedicated land must be used for park. In lieu fees may only be used to purchase parkland and develop recreational facilities. And at what time would this be imposed? That would be as a condition on the final map. The next fee would be the parkland impact fee. It would be imposed on new residential development, not requiring subdivision, a subdivision map. It would pay, it could pay for cost of acquiring new parkland, and it would be imposed prior to the issuance of a building or development permit. The following, the next fee is the park improvement impact fee. Again, it would be imposed on new residential development, subdivision and non-subdivision development. It could pay for cost of park improvements, and this could include maintenance and equipment. And it would also be imposed prior to the issuance of the building or development permit. And the last fee is the community center and recreation facilities impact fee. And that would be imposed on new residential development, again, subdivision and non-subdivision development. It could pay for cost of maintaining community centers and recreation facilities, and it would also be imposed prior to the issuance of building or development permits. So the fee study presented by NBS establishes the maximum allowable amount that the city is able to charge. We realize that adding any fees to development has the potential to affect development, and so staff is recommending that the fees be adopted not at the full rate, but at 40% of what is allowable. Also, we are recommending that these fees be increased by 10% every two years with our biennial budget, beginning with fiscal year 2023, 2025. And by taking this approach, we will have a gradual increase in fees while bringing the city’s fees in line with other jurisdictions that have also recently updated similar park fees. This slide shows our current fees that are charged on development. As you can see, currently, we only charge parkland in lieu fees. And these are currently charged per bedroom. As Joe noted, we are aligned with state law starting in July, and so we will be changing that or to use the square-footage model. This chart shows the maximum allowable that the city is able to charge. If we look at, for example, the 900 to 1,200 square foot line, we see that the parkland impact fees, park improvement fees, and the community recreation impact fees are included and would be a total of 16,503, with the difference between what we currently charge and the maximum of 13,503. The parkland in lieu fee is not included in this total, and as it’s listed in acres per unit. And it’s, the fee is based on the fair market value, so we’re not able to estimate that amount at this time. This is showing what the city is proposing the fees to be, not the full amount, but again, 40% of the maximum allowable. Using the same example as before, the 900 to 1,200 square foot line, the total in fees would be 6,601, with a difference of 3,361 of what we currently charge. In this example, again, the parkland in lieu fees are not included, as those again are listed in acres per unit. The financial impact that these fees have are estimated and based on what the population is projected to be through 2045. The proposed fees would increase average annual revenue from 227,000 to 465,000. The actual revenue would, of course, depend on development and what projects the city can assess impact fees on. For example, in fiscal year 1819, the city collected 27,636. And in fiscal year 1920, they collected 30,689 in park impact fees. Staff has seen a big decline and has attributed this to mandated exemptions to accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Therefore, an increase to the average revenue each year from the proposed fees is likely going to be far less. The fees proposed are not enough to completely address our park inequities and deferred maintenance needs. We need a more significant funding source, not only to sustain current service levels, but also to accommodate future growth. As stated before, we’re recommending that the fees be increased by 10% every two years with the city’s biennial budget cycle. It should also be noted that per California law, this nexus study and fees associated with it would have to be updated every eight years. The recommendation from the Planning Commission from a public hearing on March 1st was unanimously recommended, staff’s recommendation, which I will read to you in a moment. And also, on March 7th, the Parks and Recreation Commission also unanimously recommended the staff’s recommendation. And this is the staff’s recommendation that the city council adopt a resolution approving the Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Study dated January 18th, 2022, prepared by NBS Government Finance Group, and adopt an ordinance adding Chapter 15 entitled Park Development Impact Fees of Title III and repealing Article 5 and 6 to Chapter 6 of the Watsonville Municipal Code, and adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 6 of Title 13 by repealing Article 2 in its entirety and replacing with a new Article 2 entitled Quimby Parkland Dedication and Fees in lieu, and adopt a resolution approving Parks and Recreation Impact Fees to financially mitigate impacts to parks and recreational facilities, and approving Quimby in lieu fees. This concludes our presentation. We’d be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I have a quick question before I call on council. So you’re asking us to approve multiple resolutions separately this evening, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, council. Councilwoman Garcia.
I have three questions to ask, and the first two have to do with background information. The general plan identifies five acres for 1,000 for park space. My question is, is there enough space in Watsonville for this to happen?
It’s a tough question to answer. I think as we all know, you know, I think I would say that there definitely is limited space for us to achieve that goal. One of the ways that can get us vastly closer in a short amount of time is really to be able to work with our school district to expand our joint use agreement, to provide the community with access to our school fields and playgrounds. And that’ll get us, according to our 2008 Parks and Recreation Master Plan, it’ll get us close to five acres per thousand residents, but it still won’t get us quite there. So I think that work with the school district, in addition to creating additional park space, could, I think that’s what it would really take to get us to five.
So then, in terms of our general plan, cooperating with the school district would count?
Yes.
Okay, very good. My second question is, you kind of mentioned in terms of the school district, but in actual space, is there locations you have identified where we could actually build parks?
Yes, there are some limited spaces or parcels within the city limits that we, as staff, have identified as potential park space that could be developed, purchased and developed at some point if we have the money, or if we had the money to make those purchases.
Yeah, money. Okay, and my final question has to do with the fees. It appears that there are four fees that we’re considering: parkland in lieu fees, parkland impact fees, park improvement fees, and community center and recreation facilities impact fees. First, I want to thank Samantha for developing the summary of fees chart that you shared earlier, because it helped me understand the who and the when of all those fees. So I thank you for that. My question is, I suspect that the community has not seen that chart and wondered how they would be able to access that chart.
Sure. So that chart, I just received from Samantha, I believe, yesterday, and found it very helpful as well. And so we ended up including it in our presentation to the Planning Commission, as well as to the council tonight. As we work towards updating and establishing our fees, I think our goal, at least in Parks and Rec, is to be able to publish what those fees are on our website and help the public kind of better understand how these fees are assessed and who they’re assessed on. So I think that’s one thing that we could do after this presentation tonight, is at least take that chart and fees that are adopted by the council after the second hearing, take those and post them to our website.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you. Any other council members have a, Councilwoman Dutra?
Thank you. Will the impact fees be on all developments, including moderate and affordable housing?
Yes, they would apply to all types of residential housing, including market and affordable housing, yes.
And then, thank you. And then, is this common, these four, the four fees, are they common in other cities?
To my knowledge, they are. I defer to Joe, though, to verify that.
Yes, they’re all quite common.
Oh, so most cities have all four of these fees?
I would say, yeah, I’d say the majority of cities that we work with do.
Okay.
I would echo that, council member. I often see these fees in cities.
Okay. And then, my last question is, you, I just totally... You said that, you know, you considered the effect that these fees would have on future development. Can you elaborate what you guys have come to conclude on that?
Sure. So when we took a look at the maximum fees that we could establish based on the nexus study that NBS put together, we realized that if we were to ask the council and the community and our developers to accept those fees, we would be increasing our fees by hundreds of percent in one year. And, you know, I think really realized that that’s just not realistic to ask of our council or to our community or to our developers if we were to also want to encourage development to continue, especially around housing. So what we did is we took a look at, again, that maximum and created several different scenarios based on that maximum. So we looked at, you know, what does 50% of the maximum look like? And 40%, and 30%, and 25%? We landed at 40% because in most of those kind of bands or brackets, we’d see an increase, but it seemed like it was kind of a more palatable increase than, say, I mean, obviously, the maximum. And wouldn’t drop us to a level where we’d actually be charging less for some of our fees as we got closer to about the 30% range. Some of our fees, especially for the larger units, ended up being less than we’re currently charging. So 40% gets us to a level where we stay above our current fees without, I think, going too far to the edge, or too far to the other end, where we’re charging way more than what we are currently charging.
Thank you, Director.
Any other council members have any clarifying questions at this time? I’d like to welcome, from his travels, Mayor Protem Montesino. Are you there?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, we can hear you. We just want to remind you, we can hear everything.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Tomato says mute. All right. So we’re going to continue and go to the public. Do we have any public comments?
Steve Trujillo, District 7, Cabrillo Board of Trustees. I realize the inequity was pretty bad compared to Santa Cruz. 143 acres, and they have 1,700. Santa Cruz is majority white, upper-middle-class. We’re vastly majority Latino, and we’re certainly not upper-middle-class as service of annual salary. I am shocked, and you should be as well. If this is an environmental racism, I don’t know what the hell is. We need to create more parks. We need to create, by the way, a city aviary, and I’m going to promote that. And the only person that responded was Nick, and thank you, Nick, for responding. And I questioned, look, folks, we have all this beautiful nature. We need more parkland. We need an aviary to allow people to enjoy the 203 species that the Abada Autobahn Society found exist here in December. Folks, we need to increase these fees, including the Quimby fee. We need to be more parks. And yes, let’s tear down Kmart. Let’s build some low-cost housing, maybe a bowling alley and a park. There’s no park in that whole corridor along Freedom Boulevard, except that one little, Callahan, and thank goodness it’s there. Otherwise, there’d be nothing that resembled parkland along Freedom Boulevard. Folks, this is badly needed. It’s been neglected since 2008. We’re 14 years after 2008, and it needs to be done. And I cannot stress how much healthier the city will be to have more parkland, more trees, more birds, preferably in a city aviary where we can enjoy them. In addition to that, folks, we’re going to have to bite the bullet. If it’s 40% or whatever Nick says it is, we’re going to have to let the developers know, we need the money because we need to have more parkland. The city has gorgeous, beautiful pieces of real estate. We need to emphasize them. We need to show people that we care about our environment, not just lip service. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Welcome.
Hi, Carolina Moreno from District 5. You know, I often hear a lot of discussion, especially lately, about the growth of Watsonville. And I think this is what planned growth looks like, right? And I just want to pose a question, too. Is it more important to our council, to our city, that this would scare off developers? Is that who we’re catering and prioritizing? Or that this would, in fact, increase and give us more opportunity for parks in our city, which has the lowest parks and green spaces in the state per capita? And I realize, thank you so much for the presentation. It was a great presentation. I really appreciated it. And I realize that the Parks and Rec Department is scarily underfunded. And I’ve not seen anyone on the council or in the city move to redistribute any funds. And so I recognize that this is what it looks like when the department has to find money for itself. So I do ask you to please support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, my name is Yasenia, District 7. I'm also in support of this. And I, again, you guys keep talking about like the growth of Watsonville, and I know it's a hot topic right now. In terms of like, oh, you guys brought up, okay, you guys are trying to frame like, oh, well, we don't have enough space for parks, but you guys have like, the city had outlined how many vacant lots you guys had, but in your report, like, the current one, where you guys are talking about the limit line, you say only 10. And in terms of like buying land to make a park, I was just wanted to bring up how much money you guys are spending on redoing Ramsey. Like, I wish we could have cut some of those things that are going into Ramsey out and bought like a small plot of land and made a small park in a spot where there wasn't one, instead of redoing a park where there's already, like, everyone goes to that one because it is the biggest one in that area. There isn't really another one close to that district. Yeah, that's kind of all the thoughts I have on that right now, but thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other folks from the public?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, City Council, Bernie Gomez, District 1, with MIPA. I just want to say, first and foremost, it's finally good to see Steve in person. You know, someone that I've seen on Zoom for quite a bit, right? But, you know, Parks and Rec is usually, you know, and often overlooked, right? Usually often the first one to get cut, you know, when budget strife arises and stuff. You know, this presentation just, it just kind of laid it out for you, you know, made it kind of easy for this city, for this council to make that decision to support not just Parks and Rec, but you're supporting the community, you know, to have those, that open space, you know, which ultimately also helps, you know, families just have a good time, you know, help with their mental health, you know. But just, I just really want to say that I think it's, again, this is a clear path for y'all to support this department. I don't have much to say besides that, you know, and it just, again, just, Parks and Rec is a very vital component to every city, right? To every, you know, department, you know, to every, you know, community. But here, yeah, it's really like underfunded, you know? It's, you know, it's, we see it in that budget, and just the last thing I'll say is, it's maybe time to start thinking about how we, you know, equitably distribute that, the general fund, you know, and make it more equitable for these apartments so they can actually, you know, thrive, you know, and create these things, you know, create more spaces for the community and stuff. So thank you all for your presentation.
Thank you, Bernie. Do we have any other speakers from the public? Okay, and we're going to come back, and I'll take a motion, and I'd like a little support with this to make sure I'm doing it right. I'd like a little motion from our city council on the first resolution. Is that correct? I move the first resolution. I'll second.
I'll second that.
Oh, you were beat. Sorry, Mayor Pro Tem. So could I have clarification on what the first resolution is?
Sure. If I could clarify, I think the motion was to approve the resolution approving the Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Study dated January 18, 2022, prepared by NPS Government Finance Group. Yes?
That is correct.
Okay.
And we have a second.
Who seconded? Besides Montesino? Okay.
All right. Any other comments or clarifications? Or we have roll call? Roll call, please.
Dutra?
Aye.
Estrada?
Aye.
Yes.
Hurst?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Quiros Carter?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. Then we're looking at our second. All motion to approve? Okay, and we have a second. Okay. Councilman, and would you clarify for the public what our second?
I think that the second motion is to introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 15 entitled Park Development Impact Fees of Title III Finance and repealing Articles 5 and 6 to Chapter 6 Taxation of the Watsonville Municipal Code.
That is correct. Any other comments or questions? Councilman Hearst?
Yes, I think the big question with both of these resolutions is, and maybe we'll get the answer on the next agenda item, but where do we find the land and where do we find the money to acquire more park space?
All right, thank you. Okay, so are there any other comments or questions? All right, let's have roll call.
Dutra?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hurst?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Quiros Carter?
Aye.
Estrada?
Aye.
Oh, I got missing one. Parker?
Yes. Okay. All right, we're looking at the introduction of ordinance amending Chapter 6 of Title 13 of the Watsonville Municipal Code by repealing Article 2, the parkland dedication and payment of in lieu fees in its entirety and replacing with a new Article 2 entitled Quimby Park Land Dedication and Fees in lieu. Do I hear a motion?
All motion to approve?
That's correct. That's the next one. Yes.
Yes.
I'll second.
Did we have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Quiros Carter and Garcia was the second. All right, any other clarifications or questions? Comments? Okay. Roll call, please.
Dutra?
Aye.
Estrada?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hurst?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Quiros Carter?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Our last motion is for a resolution approving Parks and Recreation Impact Fees to financially mitigate impacts to parks and recreational facilities and approving the Quimby in lieu fees. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Garcia and Quiros Carter. Any other questions or clarifications? Okay, roll call, please.
Dutra?
Aye.
Estrada?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hurst?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Quiros Carter?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Nick and team. We appreciate your information, and I'm sure we'll hear more and more as time goes on. Okay, we are moving on to 12B, major modification of the Miles Lane Project to allow the relocation of Building 5 to avoid overhead power lines. This is recommended by our Community Development Director, Miriam, and the staff report will be by our Principal Planner, Justin Meek.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. I'm Justin Meek, Principal Planner with the City of Watsonville, and will be giving tonight's presentation concerning the major modification of the approved Miles Lane Project, as well as modifying the findings for the density bonus component of this project as well. Just by way of a quick overview, I'll touch on the project location and what area of the overall project site we'll be discussing. Talk about the originally approved project and the proposed modifications that are subject to review tonight. Touch on the required findings, and as a preview, there's no real changes to required findings, except for some clarifications concerning the density bonus language, and then provide a recommendation for your consideration. As some of you may recall, this project site is located off of Miles Lane. It's comprised by four properties in total for the overall Miles Lane Project Site, however, the only portion of which that's under consideration today for modification is the one highlighted in those dash yellow line that's at 39, 139 Miles Lane. It's roughly two acres inside compared to the 4.7 overall site. Nearby are various forms of residential development, apartments and mobile homes. As you can see in this graphic here, too, a portion of the upper Watsonville slough runs through the middle of the site. The overall project actually had two main components, one by Encompass, the other by Eden Housing. Encompass was looking to redevelop their existing facilities with new inpatient and outpatient facilities, and the Mid-PED housing component involved providing affordable housing, totaling approximately 71 units, 72 units in five three-story buildings. Also, part of their project was a community building that had a variety of amenities, including everything from a learning center to property manager and service offices, laundry room and computer lab. So the overall project site, just for your reference, of the approved project plan is shown here, and the concern came back in September of last year when Betsy, on behalf of MidPEN, contacted staff to let them know that they were running into challenges as they were designing the construction drawings for applying for a building permit. That was over here next to Building 5, that's highlighting the orange. There's some overhead power lines that a portion of the stairwells off Building 5 encroached into. And when they approached PG&E, they let them know that they would not allow the construction of the project as shown here. And so they formally then requested a modification, and did so by proposing to avoid the overhead power lines by essentially rotating the building and placing it on the opposite side with placing parking underneath, as shown here. And so as you can see, now, there's no structures that PG&E will oppose or not allow for building as shown in this modified site plan around Building 5. The proposed modification does not include or involve any of the following: changing the number of dwelling units or parking spaces, changing or increasing the height, increasing impervious surface area, change the overall location, and with only small changes to the height of retaining walls, and of course, the architectural element. The buildings themselves are just being flipped, but otherwise, materials, colors, architectural elements remain the same. There are a few new conditions that are included as part of the resolution, as attached under numbers 45 through 53, and these address a range of questions and concerns that were raised by staff during the plan review process, as they were concerns around the slope stability of the retaining walls, some drainage and flooding implications, how the trail location was going to link up with it. And those specific matters will be addressed as part of the building permit application and included as the conditions that I just referenced. This also provides an opportunity to address an issue that was raised by our housing manager with special legal counsel, as he worked with MidPEN on entering into the Affordable Housing Density Bonus Agreement, as required as condition number 10. There are some clarifications that were done to the language in the density findings, just to allow for entering into that agreement in accordance with the city's municipal code and state density bonus law. The changes to the project plans and to those clarifications, to the findings under density bonus, do not change the overall substantive to the findings that were made previously for the originally approved plans, and those remain as they were before. As such, staff recommends that council consider adopting a resolution approving a major modification to the approved Miles Lane Project to allow the relocation of Building 5 to avoid overhead power lines across the property at 139 Miles Lane, as well as modifying the findings approving the density bonus for the project pursuant to Municipal Code Section 14-47.130 and State Density Bonus Law. Just wanted to let you know before I conclude that we have a representative from MidPEN, Betsy Nahas Wilson, who is also available to give a short presentation and answer questions.
All right, we'll move to council. Do you have any clarifying questions at this time, which may also include MidPEN? Yes?
Oh, well, in fact, I was thinking that maybe after they give their presentation, I have some questions for them.
Okay. So I'm looking at this, and MidPEN is here. Are they here in reference to answering some questions, or are they here in reference to giving a report?
They indicated that they would like to say a few words, and of course, are, would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, I'd like to invite you up to the podium then, please.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Betsy Wilson with MidPEN Housing. I did provide a short presentation for folks who are new to MidPEN, but I don't have to give that tonight. I'm happy to just answer questions, whatever the will of the council is.
Okay, so we were led to believe that you wanted to say a few words? Those are very welcoming, nice words.
I will say a few words. So Miles Lane Family Housing has been a development that we've been working on for a number of years now alongside city staff. We're really excited that we have all of the financing now committed from the state and the federal tax credit program to proceed with building the community, and that includes a portion of funding that's allowing us to provide housing that has a preference for farmworkers. So 35 of the units will have a preference for farmworker families, which we know is a very substantial need in this community. So we're moving forward. We have an investor in place. We've resubmitted for our building permits, are working closely with staff on that, and are really excited to break ground and bring this new community to Watsonville. And we thank you for your support on the original entitlement as well.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. And so I'm going to come back. Councilwoman Garcia?
Okay. I saw in the report, there was six funding sources, and I think I heard you say you have all the funding now? Okay. And so I need some clarification. About a week or so ago, I submitted a letter of recommendation for some state funding, and I thought that would be included for this project, and could you just...
Oh, that was probably for Encompass. So our sort of neighbor partner, Encompass, is working to finance the redevelopment of the Seaside City Program. And I know Christine Siple is actively working on that.
Got you.
So that is separate from the housing, and that is very likely what you wrote that letter for. So that's fantastic.
That's probably, that's what it was. Okay, thank you for the clarification. And so then, I'm not sure if you're the right person to, well, yeah, I think you are the right person to ask. In the initial development of this project, there was a lot of input from neighbors, and as a result, there were some changes to the design. And so my question now is, have you heard from the neighbors regarding to this modification?
So in the original community meetings, this particular building wasn't a topic of interest with the community. So the redesign work happened up at the top of Miles Lane along Santa Clara and Kimberly, and none of that is changing.
Okay.
So with this building rotation, which unfortunately was, you know, an oversight on our part to not deal with sooner, and we're scrambling at the last minute, we've not held a community meeting about the rotation. And we would have reached out to neighbors who had, we had relationships with, if it had been a topic they were interested in before, but it wasn't one that they had raised.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hearst?
I assume the power lines have been there for some time. What was the plan originally, knowing the power lines were there?
Well, so the power lines were, have absolutely been there since like the 40s. And our drawings that were put together by our engineers didn't accurately locate them in relationship to the stairs on the building. And so when we sent our surveyors out to survey the lines specifically, they don't actually go over the building, but they go over the stairs, which for PG&E is also a conflict, and for us. And so that site is so constrained, we looked at squeezing it all different ways, but this ultimately was the only way to fully clear those power lines. And yes, I've been kicking myself, we should have, you know, done this before. But there are other factors in the past. We had a road going up, and we had another building before that we abandoned. So, you know, there's sort of a long history there of how we ended up where we are.
Could you tell us a little bit more about the other constraints of the property?
Sure. So could you pull up the site plan, just that parcel? So if you just stay to the right-hand side of the drawing, which is where we're speaking about, you can see in the bottom, there's a sort of, it sort of looks like a mouth, there's this weird blob, yeah. So that is a seep wetland that constrains our ability to develop up the side of the property. So there's some open space up there. And then on the left-hand side... And then, on the left-hand side is the upper part of the slough, that's a drainage channel, and then, there's obviously the power lines. So, the whole thing, the whole development footprint is quite tight on that site, mainly for environmental habitat reasons.
Any other constraints? Access?
Um, well.
Oil conditions?
Well, it's a very steep site, so it's just in reference to retaining walls. So, there are, you know, we do have to construct a number of walls, but I don't know that that's, they're the same when we move the building in terms of their height, so.
I suppose all these constraints add to the cost of the project?
Yes, yes, they do. It's not the most inexpensive site to develop.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other clarifications by council? Okay, we'll go out to the public. Are there any public comments? Please let us know your name and what district you're in. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sherry Storm, and I am the Chief Development Officer for Diantes Community Dental Care. Diantes operates a five-chair dental clinic located at fourteen-thirty Freedom Boulevard, on the same campus as other medical and behavioral health services provided by the County of Santa Cruz. Diantes will provide over two thousand low-income children, adults, and seniors with more than eight thousand dental appointments at our Watsonville location this year. Our Watsonville clinic is located a half a mile from MidPenn Housing's Miles Lane project. It's just a ten-minute walk, which is important, since many of our patients walk or take the bus to visit us. Being housed is an important part of overall health. The Miles Lane Project includes seventy-two units of affordable housing, and that'll go a long way towards addressing the housing needs of the Pahara Valley. At Diantes, we cannot speak highly enough about MidPenn Housing. They have been a great partner in our project at fifteen-hundred Capitola Road. This health and housing campus near the intersection of Seventeenth and Capitola is in the heart of Live Oak, and it's about ready to come to fruition. MidPenn, who's building fifty-seven units of affordable housing, Santa Cruz Community Health is building twenty thousand square foot primary medical and behavioral health clinic, and us at Diantes, we're building an eleven-chair dental clinic to serve six thousand patients. At fifteen-hundred Capitola Road, it's a complicated project, because it was county redevelopment agency land, and COVID hit before construction could start. Construction has its hiccups, and that is normal. Every step of the way, MidPenn has focused on the best way forward, balancing the needs of many. At Diantes, we're dental experts. At MidPenn, they're affordable housing and development experts. Even more, they're excellent partners, and we support MidPenn's modification request.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers from the public? Would like to address this item? Okay, seeing any, I will bring it back to the city council for a motion.
I move approval for the major.
Give it to you. The guy on the telephone. Mayor Protem, you want to make a motion to approve? And do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, so, Councilwoman Garcia, seconds. Any other discussion? Councilwoman Dutra.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, and thank you for, I know we met and went over and detailed the project. I appreciate you taking time to do that. First of all, I like this project a lot. I think that we discussed the farmworker housing portion of it, and a big reason, there's not the same restrictions put on this housing for undocumented farmworkers, so I really appreciate that, because some of the other housing that this board has approved, there is the restriction because of federal funding going in. And so, I want to say thank you for, this project is ideal in many ways, and that being one of them. I also want to say, I appreciate the relationship between Encompass and the Seaside Buidet Project, dealing with, you know, addiction is real, so having a facility work together in this area with this project is important. I think that it's important to make sure that this stigma of addiction goes away, and I think projects like this help move us forward in that manner, so I want to say thank you. I'm a big, big fan of this project. And I already know this answer, but maybe you can explain. So, there's a piece of the parcel that is kind of not going to be built on? Can you explain why? I know you told me already, but I want the public to hear why that was not purchased.
Purchased or developed?
Or developed.
Developed. So, the center of the parcel is a floodway with riparian habitat on either side.
Go back one more.
What? Sorry.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was telling you to go back one more slide.
Okay, is this good?
That's all right.
So, the center of that, there'll be some restoration work done to bring in native plants along that drainage area, and then, up to the right, we originally had a building up there, and that's why the driveway is where it's shown in this plan, the old plan, but that seep wetland really proved too hard to address in terms of permitting for encroachment onto it, so we abandoned the proposal to build another building up there. So, that remains open because of the environmental constraint of the seep wetland. That's that blobby-shaped mouth thing on the.
The right above it, we see the white portion, that's that?
That is not owned by us.
And why, and why would, why, what?
We did pursue a purchase, but we were not able to reach terms on price.
Okay, so, there are, there is land in this community that may not be developed for housing, because owners are not wanting to sell it.
Sorry, I missed your point, yeah.
Yes. Okay. I just want that to be clear, because I think the public thinks we can grow, we can build on any land that there is in the city.
Yes, you got to find a willing, reasonable seller.
Willing, reasonable seller.
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Garcia?
It's just a comment. The Miles Lane Project qualified for the Housing Authority project-based vouchers, and I've forgotten the numbers now, but you were able to get more, and could you talk about that?
So, the development will have forty-three project-based vouchers, so twenty-five of them are general population vouchers for folks referred from the Housing Authority's primary waiting list, and then, I'm going to get these numbers wrong, but six are for folks who are working with the county, who've experienced homelessness and have a psychiatric disability, and they'll be supported by the county, and we have offices on-site for staff to support those folks. And then, the balance, we will have some of the farmworker units will have a Section Eight opportunity, but not a hundred percent, so we kind of get both on the farmworker side, in terms of some federal funding, but also flexibility.
Could you explain, for those of us that might not know, what are project-based vouchers?
So, the Section Eight program is a federal program that assists individuals with paying their rent, and a project-based voucher means that when they move into one of these homes that have, the voucher comes with the home. And so, they would pay thirty percent of their income, regardless of what that income is, to live in that home, because the voucher pays the balance of what we need, because even some of these rents, at sixty percent of median, you know, someone who earns just a social security check is at twenty percent of median, so some folks need that additional help.
Thank you. Good. Councilwoman Hearst?
I'm sure the advocate has had to go through so many hardships on this project. It is a highly constrained site with a lot of things that are unpredictable in projects, and so, I think you're lucky at the same time, and the public's lucky, too, that you have good partners, that you've got a good track record, that you actually do deliver and manage projects appropriately, and that you've been able to find the resources, and again, the partnerships that bring it to this stage, and so, I'm in support of the project.
Thank you, yeah, and the city's been a fantastic partner to us, so, thank you.
Good. All right, we've seen no other deliberations by the council. Can we have roll call, please? Dutra?
Aye.
Strada?
Aye.
Vesica? Yes. Hearst?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Higros Carter?
Aye.
Parker? Yes. The motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much for your report. Thank you for being here and answering our questions. We're going to move on to unfinished business, number thirteen, and I'm inviting Principal Planner Orbach to give an analysis of the Watsonville Plan Growth and Farmland Protection Initiative. This is the ninety-two-twelve report that was requested by the council.
Good evening, Mayor Parker and council, and for those in the public who have not met me yet, my name is Matt Orbach. I'm a principal planner for the city of Watsonville. Tonight, I'm here to present the staff and EPS analysis of the Watsonville Plan Growth and Farmland Protection Initiative, and I'll give a quick trigger warning for anybody who lived through political Watsonville in the nineteen-nineties. You may get some flashbacks up this next slide. I'm going to take you back to the nineties, where there was a flurry of annexation activity on the edges of the city of Watsonville, including the Thai Riverside Drive, Franch, Senior Villages, Buena Vista, et cetera, annexations, all of which were obviously contested and sparked a grassroots movement to limit growth on agricultural land on the perimeters of the city of Watsonville. What this led to was a couple of important developments. In two thousand, the city council approved a memorandum of understanding that was attached to an amendment to the local coastal plan for the city of Watsonville. It was signed by the County of Santa Cruz, the City of Watsonville, and the California Coastal Commission, and what that did is it permitted Pahara Valley High School to be developed, but prohibited additional development outside the city boundary on the western portion of the city. And then, in November two thousand and two, the Watsonville Urban Limit Line and Development Timing Initiative, which will be referred to tonight as Measure U more commonly, was approved by a majority of the registered voters of the city of Watsonville. So, what was Measure U? Measure U was the product of a year-long and very remarkable community visioning process undertaken by a group called Action Pahara Valley. That was a nonprofit that brought together a very unique combination of government leaders, farming companies, environmentalists, and business owners, and even groups such as LULAC, the League of United Latin American Citizens, to create a long-term plan for how Watsonville could grow and meet the challenges facing the city at the time. This process involved extensive public input. There was a great and very prevalent theme of finding balance, that you'll notice if you read through the initiative itself. Some of its borderline poetics, such as the measure, implementation measure three C1, which reads, "The specific location of the urban limit line represents a shared vision, taking into account and balancing agricultural and open-space lands preservation, economic development and stability, environmental integrity, and social equity." Sorry, planners fall for things like that. As I mentioned, there was a big focus on planning, phasing, and process, which was very unique, and I respect that greatly. However, there were no specific residential or economic development targets identified in the measure itself. So, what did Measure U do? It created this urban limit line. You can see here, there's several portions of this. The twenty-year urban limit line, which runs along the northwestern and southeastern portions of the city, would be in effect, or is in effect, until November twenty-twenty-two this year. The twenty-five-year urban limit line, which runs along the northeastern portion of the city, which is in effect until November twenty-twenty-seven, and then, the westerly urban limit line, which goes along essentially Highway One, western portion of the city, and is also regulated by the memorandum of understanding. It also designated seven planning areas in which planned growth could occur. So, the first one, at the northeastern, or northwestern corner here, is Area A, that would be Buena Vista. This area was identified for the development of residential, commercial, and even light industrial in three phases, and it required specific plans prior to development. This was the area that was identified for the bulk of residential units. Then, there was Area B, which is Atkinson Lane. That area was also identified for residential housing, fifty percent of which must be affordable units, and that also had a specific plan requirement. Area C is the area of west of Eastlake and south of Correlitos Creek. This area was outside of the urban limit line, so therefore, there was no specific verbiage related to how development would occur there. Area D, also outside of the urban limit line, is east of Eastlake. This area is entirely in a hundred-year floodplain and is off-limits until twenty-twenty-two. Area E was the Villages. That was the one of the ones I mentioned earlier, and the annexation activity, this is inside the urban limit line and was allowed to have development as soon as possible after the passage of Measure U. It has already developed with seventy-four senior units, and it was actually limited to senior housing, so developed as planned. Then, you had Area F, which is Manabi Bergstrom, now known as Manabi Owl. That was identified for the bulk of economic growth activity, identified specifically for industrial development and job-creating uses. And then, there was Area G, which was the area west of Highway One, which, as I mentioned, was limited from, prohibited from being developed under the MOU. So, in jumping into this analysis, given that the main thrust of the urban limit line initiative is extending the urban limit line established under Measure U, we need to evaluate the outcomes. Unfortunately, as I mentioned, Measure U didn't give us any metrics by which it could be evaluated. It kind of delayed that until, and assigned that to the specific plan process that it required in those specific growth areas. So, what we did, we started with purpose. So, this is straight from the purpose statement of Measure U. What was it designed to do? It was to promote continued economic development and efficient urban growth while sustaining and enhancing the agricultural economy. You have to do a bit of translating, but these words show up many times within the measure. Economic development essentially is referring to economic activity that creates jobs. Urban growth is in reference to housing development, and then, sustaining agricultural economy was sort of the code for preservation of farmland. So, we took that, and then, we started asking key questions, such as, you know, what economic development and urban growth outcomes can be directly attributed to Measure U? For example, you know, growth in the downtown, growth out along Main Street. You know, clearly, growth has occurred there in the last twenty years, but we can't really attribute that directly, there's no nexus to Measure U. What objective data can be collected and analyzed? As I mentioned, there's no specific targets, so we really had to look at where we could find tangible numbers to quantify what had happened. And then, how do we evaluate economic development and urban growth under Measure U based on those metrics? So, we started by identifying where farmland has been developed for non-agricultural uses, both inside and outside of the urban limit line established under Measure U. We also identified residential and economic growth targets for growth areas identified in Measure U, including the Atkinson Lane specific plan, Manabi Owl Business Park specific plan, and the twenty-thirty general plan update. In addition, we quantified the residential and economic development that has occurred in those targeted growth areas over the last twenty years. Over the next couple of slides, I'll go over the outcomes of that. Under Measure U, the only farmlands inside the urban limit line that were developed were in Area B, Atkinson Lane. The Pippin development was created during this time period, and then, there's an additional one that's in the works, but has not yet been constructed. In Area E, the Villages, as I mentioned, seventy-four senior housing units were created, and then, in Area F, one small portion of the Manabi Owl, a specific plan was dedicated for housing, and up to a hundred units of housing, and there are eighty-seven units that are currently under construction in the Sunshine Gardens project. No other farmland outside the urban limit line has been annexed or developed. We could contribute, or attribute, the lack of development outside the twenty-year and twenty-five-year urban limit line boundaries to the passage of Measure U. However, the area to the west of Highway One, as I mentioned, is off-limits under the MOU between the county and city, and that's the first line of defense in that area. Measure U did add an additional backstop to the MOU, which I needed to mention here. This provision has never been implemented, because the MOU remains in effect and does not have an expiration date. In terms of housing, citing the need for more housing, and specifically, more affordable housing, Measure U identified how housing development could be permitted in specific areas inside the urban limit line. I already went through these a minute ago, but Area A, Buena Vista, Area B, Atkinson Lane, Area E, the Villages, and in Area F, Manabi Bergstrom. So, this chart summarizes what has happened in those areas since the passage of Measure U. Originally, Area A was actually identified to have over two- Originally, Area A was actually identified to have over 2,000 units in the draft of the 2030 general plan. However, once airport safety zones, topographic constraints such as steep slopes were taken into consideration, that number dropped to 1,300 units. That area, due to some of those same constraints, has not been developed, so zero units have been developed in the area in the last 20 years. Area B, Atkinson Lane, the specific plan for that area identified the potential for 450 projected housing units. Out of that, the only ones that have been completed are the Pippin 1 units, and that is 46. There are 74 units in the villages. And then there could be up to 100 in the Manabi Owl specific plan area, and there are 87 under construction. So out of the 1,850 units that were identified in the plans, only 207 have been approved or developed for a total of 11%. In terms of jobs, as I mentioned earlier, the main target area for economic development within Measure U is the Manabi Bergstrom, Manabi Owl property. In 2010, the city approved the Manabi Owl Business Park specific plan, which identified the areas being able to produce 2,100 jobs and up to 100 units of workforce housing. I do feel the need to point out that this plan occurred during a very rough stretch for the development of commercial and office space. They had to deal with everything from recession to, you know, the move to online shopping to pandemic. So, you know, brick and mortar was a very challenging lift during this time period. So it was until 2015 that the first development within the specific plan area, the FedEx distribution facility, was approved. The facility provided approximately 200 jobs, and there are an additional two projects that the city is reviewing currently, 100 and 200 Manabi Owl, for two additional distribution facilities that could provide up to approximately another 200 jobs. There is a portion of this site that lies east of Aloney Parkway, but due to some soil constraints, previous development attempts have not been successful in that area. For the summary table here, Buena Vista was actually projected under the 2030 general plan to be able to produce up to 200 jobs. Obviously, that area is not developed, so none of those were created. Atkinson Lane was projected at being able to accommodate up to 90 jobs, but that has only been residential housing up to this point, so none of those have been created. And then out of the 2,100 jobs in the Manabi Owl Business Park specific plan, only potentially 400 have been created for a total of 17%. So to just quickly summarize the Measure U outcomes, you know, minimal development has occurred on farmland inside of the urban limit line over the last 20 years. No development has occurred on farmland outside of the urban limit line over the last 20 years, which can be at least partially attributed to Measure U and the other portion to the MOU. And the residential and economic growth areas identified in Measure U have provided minimal residential and economic growth in relation to the planning targets that were developed for those areas. So that brings us to the Watsonville Plan Growth and Farmland Protection Initiative of 2021. We, I'll be referring to this as the ULL initiative, or just the initiative, going forward here. So the purpose of this new initiative is to, and this is directly from their purpose statement, "To promote stability and long-term planning for the city of Watsonville by extending key features of Measure U, which added cornerstone policies within the general plan that established geographic limits for long-term development while allowing sufficient flexibility within those limits to respond to the city's changing needs over the time, over time." There were a few significant differences this time around. There was no community visioning process. The group of stakeholders involved is a lot smaller, smaller and narrower than the group that was involved in Action Potrero Valley, and it involved minimal public input. So what are the differences between the new initiative and the original Measure U? There's, there's three key ones. The first one is that it extends the expiration dates of the urban limit line to 2040. It also removes phasing and specific plan requirements from both Atkinson Lane and Buena Vista. But it also adds an exception, allowing the urban limit line, allowing modifications to the urban limit line without a vote of the people if they are for the provision of housing. It also renames the sections, so the 20-year urban limit line becomes Segment 1, the 25-year urban limit line becomes Segment 2, and the westerly urban limit line becomes Segment 3. The initiative includes 10 findings, but I boiled it down here to just a couple of the main ones. These key elements include the following. They state that Measure U and the urban limit line succeeded in managing the city's growth by allowing appropriate economic development and residential growth while protecting and promoting important agricultural, open space, and other natural resources. They, they state that Measure U has encouraged efficient growth patterns and protected the quality of life in Watsonville by concentrating future development largely within or adjacent to existing developed areas. They kind of, the finding that the initiative will continue to promote stability and long-term planning for the city of Watsonville by designating appropriate geographical areas for urban development over the next 18 years, and that the land within the urban limit line provides sufficient capacity to accommodate the city's regional housing needs allocation and to meet state housing laws. So with that, I'm going to hand it over for a second to Ben Sigmund from Economic and Planning Systems to go over their role in the process of evaluating Measure, the urban limit line initiative.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Mayor Parker, members of the council. Ben Sigmund, Principal with Economic and Planning Systems. I'm an economist by training, practicing in land use for over 20 years now. The city brought us on to advise on this. We added technical support around the demand forecasts in particular. We have deep expertise in fiscal impact analysis, conducted interviews with police, fire, public works that inform the findings around fiscal impacts. We also do economic development work and brought that to bear as well. I'm here primarily to answer technical questions that may come up, or to discuss real estate and land use planning issues that have an economic angle as well. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I'll jump into some of the results of the EPS analysis of the urban limit line initiative. The first key finding was the observed outcome that while the urban limit line has restricted development of prime farmland and environmentally sensitive open space, minimal new development has occurred in the growth areas that were defined by Measure U. In terms of research and analysis, a range of public and private sector housing demand projections, as well as policy goals for new housing, reveals significant variation in potential future housing development in Watsonville. That's demonstrated on the graph on the right here that has the different growth forecasts in blue, and then the low and high RENA targets. Policy goals, sorry, wrong term, on the right in gold. The analysis revealed that renewal of the urban limit line likely will cause a land supply constraint. It also found that allowing development in currently restricted new strategic growth areas creates new land supply that could potentially be used towards housing demand forecasts, but that even if new strategic growth areas are open for development, land supply constraints will continue to affect the city's ability to meet policy goals for housing development. As part of this, we also conducted an exhaustive review of the infill potential of vacant parcels within the city of Watsonville. Worked with the IT department to put together a very comprehensive GIS layer of vacant parcels and verify that it was both complete and that everything on there was, in fact, vacant. After we got through that first step of that process, 147 vacant parcels were identified. I then went through those one by one to identify potential constraints on them in terms of airport safety zones, incompatible zoning, existing entitlements that would prevent them from being available for future development, obviously. And then those parcels are shown here in red. Once we removed the ones that were not going to be available for potential future development, the yellow parcels are ones that are potentially developable, meaning that we either needed more information, they would require, you know, a zoning change or some other significant amount of work to, to get them to the developable level for residential units. And then the green parcels shown here, if you can see them, there's only a few, 10 of them, are ones that are developable today. So the green and yellow parcels combined, if we were to just assume that all of those would eventually be developable, total about 17 and a half acres. So at a density of 16 dwelling units per acre, which is a common one in recent development projects and for medium-density housing, that would yield approximately 281 residential units. In terms of fiscal and economic impact considerations, new development in Watsonville, whether that's infill or development on the city edge, will have one-time infrastructure improvement costs. Two, population growth increases surface burdens and department costs under any growth pattern scenario, and creating growth, strategic growth areas at the urban edge could support new economic development opportunities, including a potential visitor-serving development at the intersection of Highway 1 and State Route 129 at the Redmond House parcel. As part of that, we did identify two specific strategic growth areas that could potentially have residential or economic development on them if Measure U were to expire. We, in looking at Area C, which is under the 25-year urban limit line currently, the majority of that, of those parcels in that area are located in either the 500 or 100-year floodplain. So we created a map that removed all portions of that that were in the floodplain and identified a part that could, that had significant potential in terms of connectivity, providing parks in an area with very low parks per capita, and other benefits. And then in terms of economic development, the Redmond House parcel has a very interesting history because there is actually a carve-out in the MOU for this, for this parcel, in which the city reserves the right to annex it in the, at a future date. This is also one that is very prominent in terms of its value in terms of visitor-serving commercial that could be placed on the site. So we did look into the potential of those two lots. And then I also just quickly wanted to touch on the protection of wetlands. So neither Measure U nor the urban limit line initiative specifically state anything about the protection of wetlands. There's a lot of talk about open space. However, in, in this, the initiative process up to this point, the protection of wetlands has figured prominently in a lot of the public-facing materials, in even the impact report that was submitted to the city yesterday, as well as in social media. So I wanted to go over quickly just what the state is of protection of wetlands in and around Watsonville. So all wetlands inside the city limits are zoned for environmental management, open space. What that means is that there's no residential or commercial development allowed on those, and there's a very limited set of uses that can occur there, such as parks, trails, open space, sloughs, et cetera. There are also no wetlands located in Area A, Area C, Area D, or the Redmond House parcel that would be affected under any expiration of Measure U. In addition, any environmentally sensitive habitat areas in a potential annexation area would be identified under the CEQA review for any potential development and would be zoned EMOS upon annexation. And I'll show a map in a minute that sort of gives you a better broad view of that. And then in addition, you know, we are not the only ones that regulate wetlands, so they're protected and regulated by a large group of state and federal agencies, such as the California Coastal Commission and the Coastal Zone, the US EPA, US Army Corps of Engineers, State Water Resources Control Board, Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board, et cetera. So this, these two pictures demonstrate, the one on the left is the satellite image where you can actually see very vividly where the sloughs exist within the city of Watsonville. And then the one on the, the map on the right shows the general plan environmental management areas map, which identifies all of those areas inside and outside of the city of Watsonville, so that if any of those areas were to be annexed in the future, they would be zoned EMOS. So to summarize, in our review of the urban limit line initiative and Measure U, minimal residential and economic development has occurred in Measure U growth areas that were identified as part of that process. The urban limit line initiative would create a land supply constraint. The urban limit line initiative would prohibit the creation of additional strategic economic development opportunity areas, such as the Redmond House parcel, which would not be allowed without a vote of the people. And then wetlands areas inside and outside the city are already protected. With that, I will hand it back to you for any questions.
Thank you, Matt, for that thorough report, and I will go to the city council for clarifying and technical questions. Councilwoman Garcia.
Okay, thank you. My first question is actually directed at the attorney, our city attorney, Samantha. I think it was yesterday, the council received a seven-page letter from the attorney representing the petitioners, saying that our report that was just presented to us quite elegantly was illegal and biased. Could you respond to that?
I reviewed the letter from the proponents, obviously, and I had reviewed drafts of Mr. Orbach's presentation, which I agree was excellent, before he provided it. And I certainly don't think that there is anything unlawful about the 9212 report. The election code specifically authorizes the council to request a report pursuant to 9212 from staff. And the authorization in the election code is quite broad. The council has quite broad discretion in terms of what you request from staff. And so council made that request pursuant to the authorization that is specifically granted to you by the election code, and staff specifically responded to your authorization. And there is no indication that the information that staff has, staff provides has to be unbiased, or even-handed, or talk about the advantages of the ballot measure. That being said, I don't think there's any indication that this presentation, which simply provided facts, was unbiased, particularly if you look at case law, which has found information that was biased. What was provided here is nothing like what courts have found to be biased. The last thing I'll add, two more things, actually. One is that the purpose of a 9212 report is to give the council the information that you need to make the one decision that is before you tonight. The decision that is before you tonight is to execute your duties under Election Code Section 9215. And those duties tonight are to either decide to put the measure on the ballot, the June or the November ballot, or to adopt the ordinance as-is. That is the decision that is before you tonight. The purpose of the 9212 report is to give you the information that you need to make that decision. And if staff feels like adopting the ordinance would not be in the best interest of the city, it is staff's obligation to give you that information. Thank you.
Thank you so much. With that, then, I do have some questions for staff, and actually, three questions to staff and two questions to the petitioners. First, I want to thank EPS for such a detailed analysis. There was just so much information, but I have limited my questions to only three. My first question is, in the draft 2030 general plan, 1,850 housing units were projected. Since the 2030 general plan has not been adopted, does it make a difference on the impact of Measure U?
I don't think EPS probably is in the.
Yeah, but you know, since we haven't adopted the plan.
Yeah, and that would be actually the case for the Atkinson Lane specific plan as well. The approach that we took was trying to figure out quantifiable metrics we could use to evaluate, and those were the plans that had been created, adopted or not, that identified a potential for housing and job development in those areas. There, there are no other numbers to go by without doing a much more substantial deep-dive analysis through, for example, something like a general plan or housing update process, where you would take the time to really establish that, you know, agreed-upon, common set of facts, and then have a much broader discussion. So those were, those were the only examples that we had of, of projects where, you know, developers and city officials had gotten together and projected specific numbers for development in those areas.
Okay. My second question is, I've heard from dozens of community members that they want to refurbish and protect the Redmond House. Does this measure do any of that?
No, this measure has nothing to do with that. Under this measure, the Redmond House parcel would remain outside of the city unless there was a vote of the people to amend the urban limit line to include that in the city limits. So until that point, it's, it's in the county, so.
Okay. And then, this is for my clarification. Did I understand correctly that there are only 876 housing units that could be refurbished for infill, but RENA is asking for over 2,000 units? Did I understand that correctly?
I think that's a fair summary, yeah. The, the current land supply that the city estimates based on vacant parcels at the assumed density of 16 dwelling units per acre, which is typical mid-density development today, is the 876 figure. And then separately from the, from the county. And then separately from the, from the county and state, the numbers are highly preliminary, but the RENA allocation that we anticipate in the next cycle is on the order of 2,000 units, yes.
Okay, thank you. These two questions, is there somebody that's?
Councilwoman Garcia, you can go ahead and state your questions, and if they'd like to include that when they get up and make comments. That's fine. But the, this is a focus on the 20, oh my goodness, the 9212. Well. And, and, and our report. So you can just put them out there. So then, when they get up, if they'd like to address them, that's fine. But they're not speaking at this point.
Okay. Okay. So these are the two questions that I hope you'll be able to answer when you speak to us. One, as a member of the League of United Latin American Citizens, I attended many of the Measure U meetings 20 years ago. The meetings were very contentious, and the result of the Measure U outcome was a result of a lot of negotiation and compromise. So my question is, is where was the negotiation and compromise for this new measure? So that's my first question that I'd like answered. The second question is, the staff has identified potential residential development in Area C and potential economic growth in the Redmond House parcel. Are you willing to meet with city staff and community members to possibly negotiate and compromise on those two areas? So that would be my second question that I hope will be answered.
Right, thank you very much. Do we have any other clarifying questions? Councilwoman Kateris Carter?
Matt, I had a very quick question. Excuse me, I was wondering if you could possibly answer the slide that had the developable, developable parcels, it's a bit of a tongue twister, with the yellow and green 17.55. Is the, do you have the number that's just green that's, that we could develop today, possibly?
I have that on hand, but I could get that for you.
Okay, that would be great. I'm curious to know what that number is, what the acreage of that would be. Thank you so much.
All right. Any other, other clarifying questions from council? No? Okay. So we will go out for public comments at this time. I'd like to remind everybody to state your name and your district. If you don't know, will be helpful to you. And welcome.
Hello, my name's Sam Arndt Shaw. I'm in Ari Parker's district. Our group, the Committee for Plan Growth and Farmland Protection, has been working on this effort since 2018. We reached out to the city manager, Matt, and met with him in three different occasions. And our last meeting concluded where he was going to come back to us with some folks and talk about some items, but he never got back to us. Some of us did have conversations with some of the city council members, but they didn't seem to be engaging with us. It was inaccurate to say that we didn't try to include the city, and someone else can address the Redmond House thing. It's, that's really not an issue here. We couldn't change the boundary. It would change the whole thing, but someone else can address that. Our committee is supporting and encouraging planned growth. Your Oakland consultants could look to San Francisco, where building in hills is not declared infeasible for development, as is reported in the report several times. This report is, we feel, is flawed, biased, and unprofessional. There's no such thing as one-time infrastructure costs, which occurs throughout the, the project, through the, the report. There are many vacant and underutilized lots available within city limits, but the report does not use the term "underutilized" in any of its documents, even though "underutilized" is a major category for the city's housing element. Saving our agriculture lands is what this initiative is about. We submitted a report that discusses several, all the seven items of a 9212 report and goes over many of the benefits of renewing this initiative to 2040. We think that you'll see some of the benefits that were not, there were very few, if any, benefits in that. It was all negative. And so we hope you will read that. People of Watsonville don't want urban sprawl, and the citizens of Watsonville don't want to see their valuable coastal farmlands turned into San Jose.
Thank you, Sam. All right, do we have any other public speakers?
Good evening. My name is Bob Culbertson. I live on Green Valley Road. I'm a speaker to you tonight for the Committee for Plan Growth and Farmland Protection. I will focus the, on the topic of vacant parcels and housing unmet needs. I was surprised that the city's 9212 report did not mention the downtown area as a source for housing units in the future. The city is working on a new downtown-specific plan and doing a good job. The construction of the terrace at 445 Main Street is an excellent example of mixed commercial use and residential use. Three shops, storefronts, and 54 good housing units in one lot. Done by a local builder, William Hanson. There are two other vacant lots on Main Street nearby, and the same thing could be done with that in terms of the numbers of units available. Mixed use is smart growth. There are not, things are not shown in the, when they show 10 buildable sites. Those vacant sites were included in the city's analysis of the vacant lots available. So when you say there's only 10 lots, that's incorrect. That's a false statement. We need to build up our downtown as a commercial and residential expansion. We're doing good things in the city of Watsonville. At 221 Airport Boulevard, we're constructing 48 new townhouses. That's not mentioned nor shown on your report. At 135 Miles Lane, earlier today, you saw what Mid-Pacifica Housing is constructing. If you look at the map, you'll see that that's not one of the 10 available lots that's mentioned as buildable. 72 new homes on two lots. The city has identified two vacant parcels on West Beach near Walker Street, not shown on this report, and they have, can grow together. The range of projected housing units needed between now and 2040, the range shown in the report was 540 needed to 3,732.
Bob, thank you, if you could wrap it up?
Yeah, I've got about three sentences. Thank you. No one knows for sure what the, what the actual number of sites will be, but the last thing I'll mention is, on the map that says undevelopable, they include Menabi Stadium, and they include Hillcrest Estates as undevelopable. And both of those have permits that have been pending or have been worked on that need some work to be able to be developed, but they're not undevelopable. So I hope you'll continue to develop the downtown area with smart growth and continue to protect our world-class farmlands by continuing with the urban limit line. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I think I'm going to review a little bit, and I appreciate, no, go ahead. I appreciate your comments. But we're going to stick to a two-minute time limit. I'm going to give you a wrap-up, which means I'm going to cut you off a little bit after that. But is there anyone else in the public who would like to address the council?
Buenas tardes a todos. My name is Javier Zamora, and I'm a certified organic grower, one of the very few independently-owned growers in the area. And obviously, when I, when we talk about land, it goes to my heart, and you guys are some fine people that have been chosen from the community to be there. I think my, my view is, of course, I don't want any land, that it's one of the very few pieces in the world that strawberries can be grown. You take that away, you're not going to get it back, just like the Silicon Valley people, where it's all paved now. I believe there's still a lot of room for you to do inland housing. I think you are going to the easy route, where it's flat and it's probably easy to build, that you don't have any power lines over. Prior discussion. I think there's a lot of work to do. I find really hard to believe some of the things that were said today, that there's very few pieces of land available that could satisfy the needs of the housing that we need. We do need another, a lot of housing, and there's plenty of meat for you to work with and put on the grill inside. Work with that, work with downtown. I know you're working on it. It's hard for me to have millennials going to San Jose or Santa Cruz or somewhere else to have a nice dinner, and for my farm workers to find a place to live when there's a lot you can do there. Let's, let, let our next generation talk about this in 20 years. Her generation, her kids, decide when we run out of things downtown and outside downtown that you could still do work with for what we need. But do not touch, let's not touch that piece of land that produces the most incredible strawberries in the world.
Thank you, Javier.
Have a back.
Muchas gracias.
De nada. All right. Do we have any other speakers? We can line up, so we know how many speakers we have. It'd be great.
Just debating on who wants to go first.
Okay.
It's one of those things. Hi, my name's Arnett Young. I'm the current president of the Santa Cruz County Farm Bureau. I'm here to discuss about preservation of farmland. It's very important. Watsonville's economic well-being of, of the business economy is tied to the viability of agricultural production occurring outside the urban line limit. Proof of this is actually quite simple. In 2020, when lockdowns were happening and many businesses were closing and people were out of jobs, agriculture was in full operation, running. And this is not just the farmers in the field, this is the whole infrastructure behind agriculture. Agriculture produced in Santa Cruz County $636 million worth of production. If you add on the economic valuation or calculations, economic benefit analysis, it turns into over $1.5 billion produced for Santa Cruz County. And this is money that is spent in Santa Cruz County, much of it down in the Watsonville area. These are scientific jobs. These are techni, technicians' jobs. These are, here, let me just kind of, some of the careers besides just in-the-field agriculture that's happening. Seed and equipment sales, managers' positions, legal services, consultants, logistic professionals, fabrication, mechanics, cooling system repairs, professionals such as HR, safety, and accounting, just to name a few, all support agriculture, and much of it is located within the city. When you pave over agricultural land, you're chipping away at these jobs. You're chipping away at this economy. Now, housing in a, a healthy Watsonville is important to agriculture. This is the same places where agriculture brings our kids for schools, where we come and buy and do our grocery shopping, where we come out to dinner. We are vested in Watsonville, and it is very important that Watsonville is healthy and supports our whole community.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Yeah, welcome to the city council. It's good to be here. Yeah, this is something that I've presented before the city council, but.
Could you let us know your name?
Oh, my name's Jerry Thomas.
Thank you. And your district?
I live outside of the city but in the Pajaro Valley. Yes, what I would want to, what I want to touch upon is why this Watsonville area, Santa Cruz, southern, southern Santa Cruz County is such a valuable agricultural area. And it's because, primarily because it's a, benefits from a Mediterranean climate. And it's not the Mediterranean climate that you find in the Mediterranean or in the Central Valley or in large parts of Southern California. It's a very small variant where the summer climate is warm and it's not hot. Everything else is pretty much the same between the two, but it makes a world of difference in what you can produce in the summer. And that is why this area is so unbelievably successful. And this variant is only found on a very small part of the continents, except for Asia. And we happen to have the largest part of that right here. And it's, it's, it is so, so unique that I would recommend that it be identified as a World Heritage Agricultural Site. And that would be something that I think everyone could get behind.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Parker and members of the Watsonville City Council. My name is Amy Newell, and I have lived in District One for quite a few years, but if the redistricting hasn't changed the line, then I'm still in District One. I wanted to offer a few words on the question, on the question of whether the 9212, the Economic Impact Report, has any obligation to be fair and unbiased and backed up with factual information. I'm not a lawyer. Your, your council, who just stepped out of the room, could hash it out with us, Sarah Clark, I guess, whether there's a legal necessity or not. But certainly, if I were sitting in your chairs, having to make this decision, I would want an economic impact report that was fair and unbiased and objective, because a lot rides on that for this city. Now, the law firm that presented this, Shoot, Mahaly, and Weinberger, some of you may not know, this is the same law firm that drafted at the hiring of the city of Watsonville in Action Park Valley, the original Measure U. And they are also the firm that is helping us, because we didn't want to get a cut-rate law firm and working out of a storefront somewhere. We wanted a first-class law firm to do right by the, the people of the city and the people of this valley. And, you know, for, to issue, and you can say, well, we'll take anything our staff gives us, you know. But we know full well that this economic impact report is going to be used for electioneering. And in that respect, I think you have, I don't know whether you have a legal obligation, but I think you have a moral duty to have an economic impact report that is fair and unbiased. A report that says Measure U has done no good at all for this valley, that it's all negative, is simply inaccurate. You saw the, the planner here who had all the headlines up there, the civil war that was raging in Watsonville during the 1990s, you know, city council meetings that went till midnight, two-day showdowns before LAFCO. And when we, when we brought Measure U together, we had 20 years of a unified community. And that, in my book, is worth something, and so is the farmland benefits that Arnett Young just outlined for you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. Karina Moreno, District Five, on the committee and also board of director for Watsonville Wetlands Watch, lifelong resident. I would also like to discuss how just because it is not unlawful to be unbiased, does not mean that it is not irresponsible and immoral, because how are you expected to make an unbiased decision with biased information? And Rebecca, I'm really glad to know that you were a part of this 20 years ago, because it helped keep a golf course from being put in where PV High School is now. And it also helped prevent the Pajaro Valley Dunes Resort and Luxury Housing from expanding even more. And we are trying to continue that work that you helped to start. I would also like to acknowledge that growth and planning do need to be had here in the city, but please realize that trying to open up an urban limit line to unplanned development is irresponsible because of how ingrained our community is to the agricultural industry. Not only does it bring hundreds of millions of dollars, but it employs tens of thousands of our community members and family members, from farmers to farm workers, to the pickers, to the food processors, to the canary workers, to the mechanics, to the truck drivers, administrators, just to name a few. We are still, according to the city's own report, a community whose household median income is $51,500. It is not in our community's best interest to open up the urban limit line and just allow developers, most who do not even know our community, to come in and build whatever warehouse or box store that they want. That is not growth in that, at all. It's only further oppression, and it would push us out. If you want growth, I want you to consider working with the landowners who have more than 150 plots of land within our city that we can build on. Why is that not a priority? There are, and I understand that not a lot of them want to sell, but you can incentivize that. Eminent domain, and if you're afraid of being sued, well then, I mean, that, that happens too when developers have these ideas and they present them to you. And I'd also just really quickly like to, uh, to talk about the misinformation about the wetlands. Protection is not just not developing on them. It is protecting them from sprawl, from runoff. And that's not covered in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina.
Hi, Yessenia, District Seven. Um, I just wanted to bring up the point that Rebecca brought up, that there's like no conversation. Um, also, in this report, you guys mentioned you guys barely had any community input, so I think it's on both sides. Uh, that being brought up, I would like to see both sides work together. Maybe some people behind me might not like what I say, but I do think it would be okay to annex small pieces of land in the future. You know, like, why can't we work together? Second of all, like, I would rather the limit lines stay and do that instead of doing damage control in the future. You guys don't bring up sprawl. Um, the wetlands, like, the animals that come to the wetlands, like, they're not just coming to the water. Um, we have ground nesting birds. Uh, animals need to be able to connect between corridors. We could, like, take advantage and turn this into, like, um, what is that? Like, when people come and look at the birds, like, there's a birding festival that happens in Monterey. Why can't we host one here? Like, I know we have small walks that happen here. Why don't we have this as a site? Let's bring tourism in. Let's find ways to grow. Let's grow within the limit line first. And then, if we're getting stuck, let's start to move a little bit outside, but small pieces at a time, instead of just opening it up. Um, it would be irresponsible. And then you guys don't talk about, like, the impact of sprawl on, like, flooding and stuff like that. Um, our fields literally get super, super muddy where the trucks aren't able to drive, and we're gonna cement over more of those. And then, how is that gonna affect the, um, the flood line? So how's that going into your guys' reports? Um, developers wanna come here regardless. Like, like, that is why there's so much contention, I think, around this, because the pressure to build housing is so much bigger now than it was 20 years ago. And again, like, why can't we change zoning? And I know it would take a while, but like, let's think of creative ways to do this. Um, and I do think that you guys should put it, I know maybe this is like the next action item thing, but put it on the November ballot so that there can be more of a conversation. Otherwise, you guys are cutting us off, you know?
Thank you, Yessenia. It would be great. And I think Vanessa, Kidos Carter, mentioned, if we could have a, a timer so that the speakers could see as well. That would be, does it have one right there?
Yeah, they have it.
Gee whiz, let's find it.
Behind you, so you can't really see it.
Great, thank you very much. All right, welcome.
My name is Carolyn Rudolph, and I live in Santa Cruz. My focus is on nourishment. My husband and I own a restaurant in Santa Cruz for 22 years. To feed and nourish is our commitment. Like many other restaurants and business, our survival depends on local organic farmland. This land provides nourishment. Nourishment to provide what's needed to be healthy, to grow, develop, to sustain life. Thirty, 300 pounds of local produce are chopped at my restaurant every day. A ton, yes, a ton of locally organic, uh, charred every, every month that we have. We depend on the bounty to sustain our hungry community. The land Measure U has protected for development is sacred land. We protect and care for what is sacred. The nourishment from this farmland reaches across the entire United States. There is a responsibility to protect what provides nourishment for so many. Food is essential for life. San Jose, once the garden of heavenly delight. Now, what happened to it? Gone. You cannot eat a microchip. We are in a climate crisis. California is experiencing extreme drought with no end in sight. Now is the time for conscious development. Sprawl, an unworkable future, enough. Imagine the city of Watsonville, a thriving model city of the future with restaurants, coffee shops, unique artisan shops, agrotourism, the glorious wetland, let, wetlands that nourish the soul and feed our spiritual hunger. The dream of regenerative farms pulling carbon back into the earth where it belongs. Who will speak for the earth? I hear her calling. Let me breathe. We could be the ones.
Thank you. Welcome, Adam.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Mayor Parker. Great to see everybody, Adam Bolaños. Buenavista. I think it's important to recognize agriculture and its potential to improve it and to further advance the economy here in the Pajaro Valley, both inside and outside the city boundary. We have more Chicano, Mexican-American, Mexican-American farmers who are interested in farming. And it's, it's so critical when we see a growing, worsening climate crisis. Not everybody's gonna be a software engineer. We have some classist people in education. I come from a family of educators where hands-on workers are fired in favor of roboticizing everything. But as far as I know, we still have to eat. We still have to feed people in this state and in the world. So let's not take for granted our climate and our farmland. And if we're gonna sustain this thing called humanity, we have a very valuable asset that short-term people who only see bank accounts may not ever see. People who say, let's approve another Starbucks, may not ever see. But we have to figure out how the city and the county are gonna work together in the future to grow and rebuild this local ag economy. There's a lot more we can do, there's much more we can improve on. We're looking forward to doing that with you, and we're looking forward to this election. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. All right, do we have any more speakers? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to, well, thank you, Matt. Appreciate your diligence and your fortitude. Uh, move on to 13B, Watsonville Plan Growth and Farmland Protection Initiative. This will be a staff report by City Clerk Vasquez Flores and City Attorney Zutler. And once again, this goes back to what our city attorney said. We're gonna be deciding on whether to place this initiative on the ballot in June, place it in November, or adopt it. As is, okay?
Uh, my report is gonna be really short because we already talked about this at, um, your meeting in February. So since the proponents acquire the required signatures, Election Code 9215 requires you that the council either adopt the ordinance without alteration or to submit the ordinance without alteration to the voters pursuant to Election Code Section 1405. You were also, um, had the option of the report, but you ordered that back in February. Election Code Section 1405 requires that the council order the election at the city's next regular election. The November election is the regular municipal election for Watsonville. However, sub- paragraph B allows the council to order a special election not less than 88 days of the election. You're still in time to order the election for June 7. We have until Friday to submit the resolution, resolution to the county. Election Code Section 9282 allows the council to submit an argument against the measure. If the council opts to order the election for June, you will need to decide tonight if you want to drop the argument against the measure or to direct a council subcommittee to write, to write it and to be approved by council. The council would have to either write the argument or approve it at its March 14 special meeting, since the arguments are due on March 18. For the November election, staff will bring you those options at, at future council meetings. The financial impact. The council already appropriated $80,000 in its growing budget for the November election. The council would need to appropriate additional funds for the June election. The estimated cost is between $65,000 to $131,000. Our recommendation is to have the council order the election for June 7 or November 8. This concludes my report. The city attorney and I will be glad to answer any questions.
Samantha, you have anything to add at this time, or you're here for questions only?
Nothing to add. Questions, if anyone has them.
Great. Counsel? Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, I just needed some clarification on the cost. You said that for the November election, it would be $80,000. However, for the June, it would be between 65 and 131. Could you explain the, the difference from 65 to 131?
Yes, um, the cost for registered voter at the November election is $2.50 to $4 per voter. The cost in June is higher, is $3 to $6. And in June, it's usually because there's less jurisdictions that have elections or measures and other items on the ballot. So in November, because there's a lot of other jurisdictions with, um, items on the ballot, the cost, cost goes down because we share the cost amongst all the jurisdictions.
Mayor, may I make a motion?
Uh, if no one has any other clarifying questions, go right ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we have the election in November, particularly because of what one of the, uh, speakers said, is in terms of the opportunity for, uh, the city and community be in communication or discussion with the, uh, petitioners to see if there's some, uh, negotiation and compromise that can take place, particularly for the, um, area for residential development and the area for economic growth.
Okay, let's see if we can get a second. Okay, Mayor Protem, you have two seconds. The disembodied voice, yes.
If I may, Mayor?
That's a good point. Thank you.
If I may, I just want to confirm that Councilmember Garcia's motion, the titles of these resolutions are extremely long, but I just want to be certain that you are, um, moving for approval of the-
Second one.
Second.
Yep.
Resolution on the agenda. Is that correct?
Is the second one about November?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the one.
Thank you.
No, uh, she just made a motion. So now, we're gonna go through the steps. And now, we're gonna do, um, technical, oh, yeah, that's interesting. So we're gonna do that. We're gonna move to public comment now, and then we'll come back for any clarifying discussion or questions. So, public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment. Any other comments or, uh, okay. Councilwoman Hearst?
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. And, uh, you know, I, I do support the, uh, the November 8 date 'cause I think it's cheaper and we get more participation. And as we've seen here tonight, you know, I feel like I'm having a deja vu moment back into time, 'cause we've had these discussions previously.